Everyone. Good evening, good evening. Don't make me use this. No, just joking. Please, yeah. Please have a seat. Welcome. It's 6:33 PM and the regular session of the San Gabriel City Council is now in session. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand, place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pooh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Relia.
Here.
The first item will be approval of agenda order.
Is there a...
Sub-approval?
Second.
Wait, wait. Okay. We've got the special Nita Rose item. Do we need to make an announcement? So our city attorney has an announcement with respect to the agenda?
Yeah, we need to do something a little unusual tonight. Ordinarily, we can only discuss items that appear on the published agenda. However, the Brown Act allows us, under certain limited circumstances, to consider items that arose after posting the agenda. That requires you to make a finding tonight that there's a need to take immediate action on that item and that it came to the attention of the city subsequent to the agenda being posted. Now, there's a twist, and that is that this is a closed-session item. And as you know, the point of a closed-session item is that we can only disclose limited amounts of that publicly in order to avoid prejudicing the city. So I'm going to tell you something, and it's going to be a little bit cryptic, but work with me here, okay? The city is currently involved in a lawsuit that I'm identifying as City of Duarte versus State Water Resources Control Board at AL. And an item has arisen in that case that we learned about yesterday. We need direction from the council regarding that item. And so I'm recommending to you that you add this to the agenda for consideration in closed session.
Okay. In addition...
To take place at the end of the meeting.
To take place after the conclusion of regular session.
No, that'd be item 10, though, wouldn't it? If we have a closed-session item. It says closed session none, though.
That's right. It would be considered as part of...
So it wouldn't be after a German, it's before.
Right, that's correct.
That's my point, yeah.
Right. In addition to that, I'm informed that the presenter for AQMD might be a little bit late. So with the, you know, leave of the council, we'll take that presentation when that person is available. Hopefully, they may still be able to be on time. So with that, do I have a motion to make the following findings, that one, there's a need for immediate action, and two, the need to take action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the agenda being posted with respect to the Nita Rose closed-session item.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any objection? Seeing none, so ordered, and we'll move to presentations.
Well, the way we set this up, we wanted to have a second action on approving the agenda order. So as the way the city clerk set that up, so.
So I will make a motion to approve the revised order.
I'll second.
Okay. Any objection? Seeing none, it's so ordered. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is presentations. First item will be police sergeant promotion of Nat Nguyen and Alan Sam. Presentation will be made by Police Chief Eugene Harris. And Opal will be administered to the above group by Chief City Clerk Sharon Clark.
Wow. Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Here we are again, at the best part of the job, and that's watching people be successful. So this is cool. I get to smile for a change. Oh, I shouldn't say for a change. Every day here's a smile, so outstanding. Alright. We're going to start with the sergeants' promotions. This is absolutely one of the most important positions in law enforcement agency. It's also everyone's favorite. Every time somebody promotes past that, they wish they were going back to that. There's a saying that says when you promote to sergeant, you lose half your friends. When you promote to lieutenant, you lose the other half. And when you get to captain or above that, you start making enemies. So maybe there'll be another day where I'll get to be a sergeant one day. We'll see how that goes. Alright, first, we have two newly-promoted sergeants, and we'll call them both up and have them stand up here if they would. First is Nat Nguyen, and his compadre will be Alan Sam, Sergeant Alan Sam. Alright, we're going to start with you, Nat. That's cool. Alright, you guys want to flip a coin? If I can go with you first? Alright, alright, we're good. Alright. Nat grew up in Rosemead, local prodigy, and graduated from Rosemead High School in 1998. He graduated from UCSB in 2003 and was hired by the San Gabriel Police Department in 2005. Married to the toughest woman in the world, his wife Crystal. She keeps him grounded and has given him the greatest gifts he's ever received, and his three children. On weekends, he enjoys time with his family and going to church and watching his daughter perform in her ballet class and attending his son's basketball class. His oldest son Nick is currently serving in the Army and stationed in South Korea. Let's give him a little hand for service. Nat's an interesting guy in that he's always thinking things through. He's got a, he's got a this keen ability to look you in the eye and try to read your mind and give you some pontificated information. And the one thing that I really like about it is he's never ashamed to let you know what he's thinking, and that's a good thing, because sometimes he passes on some great advice. We've had some significant conversations in my office, and I think he's going to pass on some of that information to the young troops that are going to come up behind him. And so I'm very proud to invite his son Lucas up to do his badge pinning. Come on, Lucas. Try not to stick him with it, Lucas. Or then again, this may be your only chance. It's not even on upside down. It's good. You know what? I think I did this backwards. I think I left out the swearing-in part before we pinned the badge on. But we'll improvise and we'll adapt. We'll be okay. Alright, next up is Sergeant Alan Sam. He is 18 years as a police officer, which began with the Long Beach Police Department, and he's spent 16 years with us here in San Gabriel. Grew up in San Gabriel, and that's how he learned about this particular police department in the city. And when he applied for police, wanted to be closer to home. During his years in San Gabriel, he's worked various assignments to include detective, investigating crimes against persons, special enforcement team, working undercover narcotics and gangs, bicycle response team, and is the department's winning mug event... Let me rephrase that. Is the captain of the mug-winning Baker-to-Vegas team from San Gabriel. He's been the team captain for Baker-to-Vegas for eight years and brought the department its first winning mug, eventually setting the standards for this running team. He has a pug that he's in love with, is 13-years-old. What's his name? Bailey. Alright. He loves to travel and spend time with his family and does a whole lot of CrossFit, as you can tell. And he does that so that he can eat bad, according to him, so he can eat whatever he wants. We try to keep him away from Ray Laura when he's walking in the building because they'll have a clash about what they're supposed to eat and the number of carbs they're supposed to take in. He bleeds Dodger blue and believes that this is the year the Dodgers are going to win the World Series. They'll make it to it, but they're going to win it this year. Alright, he will have his wife Tiffany and his 19-month-old daughter Avery come on up and pin on his badge, so welcome them up. Since you mentioned the Baker-to-Vegas thing, we'll mention one more thing about Alan. And that is, I watched him when he tried out for the bicycle response team. And whether it's on wheels or on feet, on foot, there's nobody that's going to get away from him. Alright, that's just it. We call him out when we need to chase somebody down. He's the guy. Alright, so since I did this backwards, I'll have to take the hit, but if we can have the city clerk come on up and do the swearing-in. Alright, before you come down and you guys say your few words, if I can invite the council down to have a really quick picture with the brand-new sergeants, it'd be appreciated.
You know, I'm supposed to stand on the other side, but I wanted to see some people in the eyes. We're supposed to come up here and thank a lot of people that mean a lot to us. I don't really want to thank them today. I want to tell them how I feel. And... This is a lot easier when I rehearsed it. I do recall God telling Noah to build an ark. And when he told him to build that ark, he said, "I'm only going to let certain people in." And when they went in, he closed the door. And if you are here today, you are in my ark, whether you are in uniform or my family here. I did not invite any friends today, just family, so I thank you very much for being here.
Good evening, everybody. Just want to say thank you, Councilmember Mayor Jason Pooh, City Manager, for giving me the time to be here, the support. Chief, thank you for giving me the opportunity to succeed in this department. I'm very grateful for it. I want to thank everyone here who's sitting here, who is my family, my parents, my wife, my beautiful wife, my kid, my extended family, everybody here from my platoon three, and everybody here at work, and Nat's family as well. Thank you for the support. And last but not least, 16 years ago, I took an oath to protect and serve the citizens here in San Gabriel and the community. And I look forward to continue to honor that oath. Thank you.
So, thank you both. You've both been part of the department for many years and have well and faithfully served the San Gabriel community. So thank you to both of you and your families for the sacrifice you make to make sure that the San Gabriel community is safe. And these promotions are well-deserved, so congratulations. I think we have somebody else to celebrate as well, right?
Alright. The next item will be police captain promotion of Ricky Nakamura. Presentation will be made by Police Chief Eugene Harris. Opal will be administered by Chief City Clerk Sharon Clark.
I'll get this one right. I think, I hope. Again, when we're dealing with promotions and we're talking about levels of promotion, it is very difficult, increasingly difficult as you move up the ranks in an organization. It seems that you have that pyramid effect where the higher up you go, the less spots there are, but there are a lot of people trying to get there. And so this is one of those ones where, you know, you got to put some work in to get to this one. And it takes a lot of extra effort after work, during work, before work, school, you name it. You've got to be putting in some effort here to get to this level because the competition becomes very fierce. And so with that, I'd like to bring up Ricky Nakamura, who was recently selected as our most recent captain selection, and have him come on up. Ricky started his career in law enforcement back in 2005 when he graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy. Began his career as a police officer for the San Marino Police Department. We stole him away from there, and then, once he got here, he started to shine. That happened back in 2007. Since working for our department, Ricky has served as a patrol officer, field-training officer, detective, sergeant, and most recently as lieutenant in the Investigations Division, and now a captain. He is also an adjunct instructor with the Rio Hondo Police Academy, training new recruits and representing our police department at the college. Ricky holds an undergraduate degree in business administration from Cal Poly Pomona and a graduate degree in public administration from Cal State LA. He is also currently working on his second graduate degree at the University of San Diego in public safety leadership. Ricky's also attended several prestigious trainings such as the LAPD West Point Leadership Program and recently graduated from the California Post-Command College. He'll soon be attending the FBI National Academy that begins in July. He'll graduate sometime mid-September. He'll be spending the next few months in Quantico, Virginia. And he's very excited for the rare opportunity to attend this exclusive training and being able to represent our department in the national setting. Ricky, we'd like to thank the police department and the city of San Gabriel for allowing him the opportunity to proudly serve this community. And before we swear him in and bring up his badge pinner, this National Academy that he's going to be attending, I've had the fortune, the luxury of attending this particular course. And the course itself is a lot of fun. You get to network and meet people from all over the world. You have about 250 people in your class. My class represented 31 countries. I don't know what his will represent, but it'll be very similar. So that's the fun part, a lot of learning going on and all of that. But to get accepted to this course, you have to be accepted by a pretty select group of folks. The FBI doesn't mess around or mince words when it tells you you're either going or you're not. Sometimes it is a three-year waiting period to get into this course because they only take selected folks from an area, and then they don't come back to that area again for another few years. And so it took me two times to get selected. It only took him one. He's still not going to beat my grade-point average. But I'm very proud of him and what he is about to embark upon, and it's going to be good luck. Be flying out there to watch him graduate, representing the city, and watching one of our fellow folks do some great things. So with that, if we can administer his oath and get him sworn in. Now, in attendance tonight is Ricky's family, friends, and colleagues, and his wife Teresa will be pinning his badge on. So if we can welcome Teresa up. And one last time, if I can have the council come down and take a picture, that'd be great. And then Ricky can say a few words.
I'm a little shorter than the chief, so I have to adjust this. Wow, how's the time has passed. I mean, it was just, it feels like just yesterday when I was just sworn here as a police officer. It was back in 2007. And I was reminiscing through all my photos through all the years in San Gabriel, all my promotions, all the ups and downs that we had endured. And I had an interesting connection with all my photos. Councilmember Julie Costanzo, you were here for my swearing for my police officer promotion to sergeant, lieutenant, and now captain. So this is really a celebration for both of us, your tenure leadership and my promotion for today. So thank you very much for your long tenure leadership to the community of San Gabriel. It really does mean a lot. And for the rest of the council members and the dais, I hope to be here celebrating many more successful promotions and great news and great things that our police department is doing because with our chief, we are definitely headed all the way up. So I definitely want to be up here and celebrating success with everybody else here. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my family. This is what I do this for every day, day in and day out, even coming on the weekends. I also do this for my folks, for the police department, the men and women in the police department that's sitting behind us. I come on to work every day because I work for them. It's not the opposite. The leadership theory has really changed in our department, where we as leaders, with the chief in charge, we work for these folks and we work for the community of San Gabriel. So I hope to continue on that tradition, and I'm very excited for what's ahead of our future here. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Captain Nakamura. I'm going to have to get used to the new titles. And also well-deserved, thank you and your family too for lending you to us to protect and serve our community. And please, come back and bring back some good spy stories from this academy because it sounds like, you know, there'll be a lot of cool, cool things that you'll get to learn and be exposed to there. So, congrats, and thank you all. Actually, I thank everybody here who's, you know, shows how banded together, you know, our police department is to see, and fire, members of the fire department here, to see all of you here to celebrate these individuals' promotions. So thanks. Next item, please. And, oh, well, actually, why don't we, we'll take a couple minutes, unless you want to stay for the AQMD update, the air quality management district update. Yeah, we have a special guest star, you know. Mayor, is it Mayor Caciotti? Okay, Councilmember Caciotti. He's a great speaker. I guess not. Enjoy, all of you. I hope you're able to have, like, you know, a nice evening with their families, nice dinner, something like that. Okay, as everybody's filtering out, we'll call the next item. I see our famous guest speaker has arrived on his bicycle and with his helmet. Definitely walks the walk. Getting the presentation ready. Good night, everybody. Okay, next item, please.
The next item is air quality update. Presentation will be made by a South Coast Air Quality Management District governing board member, Michael Caciotti.
Sounds like Lazarus, but it's Caciotti. Mayor, councilmembers, mayor pro tem, staff, city manager, pleasure to be here. Mr. Mayor, I was supposed to take a bus from downtown near we're filming, so the bus never showed up. 20 minutes later, I'm hustling to the Gold Line Station, and I did what you did three weeks ago. I rode, but I rode downhill, not uphill, so I'm a little sweaty. Forgive me, Mayor, I just got here.
No worries.
So let's begin. So I'm your representative on the AQMD board, and this is the AQMD for people who don't know. It's a four-county region of Los Angeles, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside counties. Founded in the 70s, before 1977, there were four separate air districts, the four separate counties. And somebody was smart, this guy Jerry Lewis in the bottom-left, who's holding over 100,000 petitions from the Inland Empire saying, "Do something about air quality" in the early 1970s when it was horrendous here. And he did. He carried legislation that created the AQMD in 1977, brought all four districts together. 10,000 square miles, 17 million residents, 12 million vehicles, and the largest cargo port gateway in the United States. We have 14 monitors throughout the four-county region. The closest one here is up by Caltech in Pasadena. If you ever have concerns about air quality, always call us. We'll have inspectors come out any time, take samples, take it back to our labs, and test it for what that odor is that someone, one of your neighbors or one of your businesses or you might be smelling. And we've pretty, actually, we just, we've got one of the only air quality sensor performance evaluation centers in the United States. It's a chamber we can test, actually, the sensors, there's many sensors out there now that people can buy at a store for like $50 up to a couple thousand that test air. But nobody knows the quality, but we have a place that can test it, and we just approved the triple the size so you can actually walk inside and test air quality sensors. This is the challenge we all face, is these forms of mobile source pollution. Light-duty, medium-duty vehicles top-left, cargo trains on the right, all diesel. Ocean-going vessels, heavy-duty trucks are diesel on the right, off-road construction equipment, manufacturing. Those are mobile sources. AQMD controls stationary sources, landfills, oil refineries, gas stations, dry cleaners. Here's why it's important now we talk about this issue, because it impacts all of us, your kids, your families, your pets, your staff right here, increased cancer risk. We always know about respiratory, but there's a lot of cardio-pulmonary, and recently, our nervous, central nervous system, we're doing studies right now at Cedar Sinai, a couple-million-dollar study where we're exposing rats because they're 99% biologically similar to human beings near the 405 freeway at University of Irvine. And what we found is there's changes in molecular structure, and this is from a world-renowned neurosurgeon from Cedar Sinai. Comes to AQMD every year and says, "For the first time, we've seen changes in molecular structure comparable to Alzheimer's in humans." So we're afraid that what's happening to the rats is going to happen to us, but it takes me five, 10, 20 years to actually manifest itself. So serious issues about our health, that's why we're here. But there's good news. There's a lot of money available. The Volkswagen settlement is controlled by a trust, almost half a billion dollars for California. There are several categories on the far-left, zero-emission transit, school shuttle buses. If you go down these lists, towards the end, the light-duty, zero-emission vehicle infrastructure, charging stations, hydrogen-fueling stations, and the amount of money on the right that's allocated between these different categories. So cities, school districts, businesses can apply for this money. And the trust controls it, but some of it comes through AQMD, and our staff will work with you if you're interested in any of these categories to put together your budget. More money available. On the left, this is our Carl Moyer program, and this is what your public utilities department can use, trucks, transit buses, refugee trucks, public agency. This is it. South Pasadena used this a couple of years ago to purchase a big public utility vehicle, actually, two, one for our sewers. There was a diesel out there, and we had a big vote on it, council, it was a split vote, three to two, but ultimately, I prevailed with two other members, and we got the CNG. It was about $20,000 more, but AQMD picked up most of that tab through the Carl Moyer program. So now when that vehicle's out there all the time in the streets, so it's not just idling pollution, but CNG is a lot cleaner. So a lot of programs like this. On the right, the problem would be that was that billion-dollar that passed years ago. There's not much money left in that program. This is a big one for your residents and yourselves. On the left is called Replace Your Ride Program. We'll give up to $9,500. Depending on your income level, you can get up to $9,500. Turn in an old clunker, polluting car, and get just a better car. It could be a hybrid, electric, natural gas, hydrogen fuel cell, battery-electric, like a Volt, that goes some on electric, some on gas. some on electric, some on gas, or transit options, or vehicle chargers. Just go to this website, and we can, we just, we approved like 60 last month, we're gonna approve 40 or so this month, people that apply for this and get this. On the right, we have a lower emission school bus program. This is incredible. We give out money not only for school buses, to transition from diesel to compressed natural gas, but the infrastructure, I was in Azusa last night, and they opened one about a year ago, upgraded their CNG station for their school district, and tank replace, that's a CNG tank right there. Last year, if you want to, instead of CNG, we've just started subsidizing electric buses. They're out now, and they've got the distance and range to handle a school district. This is for residents, again, part of the governor's zero-emission vehicle plan. We hand out, we give you charges, we give you up to $500 to put in an electric charger. If you make too much money, we'll still give you $250. And that's in addition to what Edison hands out. There's a lot of money available if you're considering going to a battery electric car or all-electric car. We give you this money too. So there's a lot of money on the bottom right, HTTP-AQMD, GovSignUp. This is our exciting program, and we've mentioned it to you, I think, last year. This is a commercial electric lawn and garden program. You know, about three years ago, we made one of our parks, Garfield Park, our mission right there, near Fair Oaks, all-electric. We contract out, I'm not sure if you have in-house or contract out or both, but we contract out with Landcare, and we put in a contract that they had to make the Garfield Park, the lawn cutting equipment, weed whackers, hedge trimmers, leaf blowers, everything electric within a year or two. They transitioned over successfully. As the equipment got better, we said in two years, the entire city will become electric. All our soccer fields, baseball fields, library, city hall, everywhere you use these equipment, we wanted electric. Now our entire city is the first in the United States to go electric, and it's not that hard. Equipment's even better now, and I have a Dan Mayb from the American Green Zone Alliance led us through it. They come here and just do one quick demonstration, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, with a piece of electric equipment. You'll determine, you'll see how quiet it is, and when they started using this, you thought it was a vacuum cleaner instead of that large, noisy equipment. Dan, if you could?
I'm gonna pretend I have the authority and say, "All right." Subject to, you know, you not blowing us all away. Okay, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. My name's Dan Mayb with the American Green Zone Alliance, and it was our organization that helped do the certification for South Pasadena, and most recently, the city of Ojai. Just a quick demonstration here. And before I actually operate it, I wanted to show you this battery. Instead of wearing a gas motor, mixing two-stroke oil into gas, shaking it up, pouring it into a gas tank and operating it, you're going to wear a backpack battery. And the air pollution reduction is amazing because it's zero emission, but the noise profile of your city will be reduced 40 to 70% when transitioning to these electric tools. But the most significant thing is the cost of operation benefit. This battery can be charged from zero to full for 36 cents. That means it's going to operate at 18 cents per hour. The gas blowers operate at $1.25 to $1.35 an hour, depending on gas. So you really want to look at the economic benefits of it as well. All right, Michael.
And can you briefly speak about, is there also potential health benefits for the workers who don't have to handle the gasoline and things like that anymore?
Absolutely. There was a recent study done by Fair Warning. They hooked up hygienic sensors to the workers, and it's a full report that's out. I can send it over so you guys can read it, but they have, we know that workers are being exposed to a lot of toxic emissions and how much, so the human health and the worker benefits are just tremendous.
And how heavy is this backpack?
It's going to be, well, it's around 17 pounds, and it's going to be about two to three pounds lighter than the industrial gas models that are used in commercial application. All right, Michael, you ready?
Do you have?
So you can see how quiet it is, but don't let that fool you. This boasts nearly 500 CFM and nearly 150 miles an hour out of the nozzle. It is a truly commercial-capable piece of equipment. And just one last thing, the American Green Zone Alliance in support of South Coast, if your city wants a demonstration, we'd be more than happy to bring the tools out for either your vendor or your city workers, and let them try them firsthand in their natural maintenance settings.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, our Public Works Director, Greg DeVinc, can wave. Please coordinate with him and see if there's an opportunity to provide such a demonstration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council.
Mayor, the economic benefits also, if you look at this slide at the bottom left, where it's a steel, that was a steel blower, at the bottom left, you can see the manufacturer's suggested retail price is almost $1,400. Because we get so many AQMD, the price is knocked down to 1,000. We add an incentive of 500, so it's only $500. And like Dan said, within a few months, you've made the money back, and after a couple of years, you're saving hundreds of dollars and protecting worker health and quiet. So we also got one for the residents if they'd like. We've got electric lawnmower exchange program, rebate program. I did this about 10 years ago. And the mowers are again very rudimentary, and it lasted almost nine years, like you actually gave it to a neighbor. But now we'll give you a rebate. So at the bottom left, if the mower costs like $250, it's gotta be cordless, all-electric, we'll give you $150. If it costs up to $400, we'll give you $200, cordless, all-electric. If it costs over $400, we're gonna give you a $250, actually it's self-propelled. So this is a great program. I've done it. You follow those six steps, and you'll get that money back, and you clean up the air in your neighborhood. Because a lot of this in our neighborhoods, you know on Saturday morning, you hear the sound at seven, eight o'clock, is leaf blowers and these gas-powered mowers.
Mike, do you have like an exchange program as well, or just the rebate?
Councilmember, we used to have the exchange program, six of them throughout the district, but what we do now is, this is, I'm sorry, let me go back, sir. This is year-round. A number of people couldn't get to the exchange program. We did one in LA County, one in Riverside. So you can just, you know, go online and follow these six points and call, and go to any place that serves them. There's one in Pasadena, one in Laverne. So it's really a good program, year-round, anytime.
Mike, also, I noticed you have it translated in Spanish. Do you have it in Mandarin or Cantonese?
Rainbow, this was brought up by a showtte the other day, and I don't know if we do, but I thought we did it one time, but I haven't seen the most recent version. Several years ago, we did, when we did those exchanges, it was, but that's a great idea, and I'm actually scheduled to talk with Executive Director Friday morning about that, Mayor Pro Tem. So I'll bring that up too. Good, great. If that wasn't on my list, that will be added.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Thanks.
In our community.
Great idea. More program, this is what the city, which you've been applying for, this is a Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee. So back in early 90s, somebody was smart, and one of the legislators in the state said, "Let's start this program, let's take money from the car registration fee, $4, some will go to AQMD, some will go to cities." And your city has taken this money wisely and purchased four CNG vehicles. The money must be used to reduce mobile source pollution, whether it's a car, a riding lawnmower, something like that. And there's many programs, and they come up every couple of years. And right now, you get every year from your car registration, money goes into this pot for you, 30% of that, sorry, 40% of that $4. Your balance right now is 165,000. It looks like your city's talking about doing alternative fuel vehicles for community services, Mission Playhouse. You do it for transit, infrastructure, charging stations, et cetera, bicycle lanes, bicycle infrastructure. So good things, you've got a lot of money, and next year it's gonna go up a lot more. So each year, your reserve goes up farther, and we can help you use that however you'd like. And just finally, our social media apps. Be happy to answer any questions. And again, our staff is available. If you ever want a tour of AQMD, to come up there, our laboratories, you have a group like a Chamber of Commerce, a community group, Rotary, Kiwanis, we'd be happy to take them up there and do a tour and provide a lunch. Our laboratories, advanced technology vehicles, we've got 150 electric charging stations, hydrogen fuel cell, compressed natural gas, all types of vehicles they can drive if they'd like to.
Nice. Questions?
Just real quick. So what is your role? Are you the regional representative, or do you actually work for the AQMD?
So this is what happens, is, this is funny, so back in, when was it, John, maybe 2008 or so, they have 13 members in AQMD board for their four county, and one represents East LA County, this position I have now. Back then, it was a lady from Bradbury, I'm trying to remember her name, I forget. She was a representative, and she stepped down, and there's a void, and a couple of people were gonna run, and they backed out, so I decided to run. Eight people ran for that position, and then I ultimately won, and then won in 2012, and on, last night. So I'm up for election again in December 2020, January, whenever they have the election. And you, every city, the 35 cities from Claremont, Monterey Park, all the way to Santa Clarita, basically the cog, plus Burbank, Glendale, San Fernando, and Santa Clarita, will vote for the Eastern LA County rep, and I'm that rep. There's a rep for Western LA County, she's down at Palos Verdes. There's a representative for the city of LA, because they're so big, that's Joe Buscaino from San Pedro.
Yes, I know.
Okay. And there's, from each county, has a city representative. There's also four supervisors on there. It used to be Hilda, and just several months ago, Janice Hahn came on to represent LA County. And the governor has an appointment, Senate, Pro Tem, and Assembly has an appointment. The governor just removed his appointment, and there's a vacancy there right now.
And I believe for our region, it's done through the city selection committee.
Yes, exactly.
Other question? Well, thank you, Councilmember Kaciotti. I mean, also, not just for keeping us informed and letting us know about these funding sources that we as a city can take advantage of, as well as residents. You know, there's a lot of programs that most people don't really know about. And we're just even talking about our home EV charging stations, like, "I want my $500." Actually, I just, I did just get that check in the mail. And, you know, also for your leadership in the city of South Pasadena, and all the work that you guys have done with Garfield Park, it's pretty amazing. So it's definitely an inspiration and a goal that, you know, set for the rest of us in the San Gabriel Valley. Also, I want to recognize other members of AQMD, Ben Wong and Rainbow, for being here tonight as well. I thank you to Vice Mayor Manchakas, because this is just, you know, your role is as a volunteer board member, right?
We do get, we get paid, it's not a salary, but every time we do meetings or something like that, you get a stipend, like we go, if you go to the cog.
I see.
You get a stipend. I'm not an employee that, I wish I was. It's a great place to work, they have a great schedule, Tuesday through Friday, 4:40. And you know, now we've built up to almost 1,000 employees. Through state legislation required to do a lot with environmental justice, communities and others, we're bringing on staff, scientists, chemists, enforcement people, government affairs. It's just, it's an incredible place to work. I mean, if I could back, I'd like to go back and work there again.
Okay.
Mayor, can I just have a question? AQMD is gonna have a conference down in, what's that area, regarding that refinery emissions?
Torrance.
Yeah. Can you talk about that?
So there's a big issue coming up with the oil refinery down in Torrance, and that area, all the refineries. There's two of them that use a chemical, I'm not sure if you've heard of the chemical, hydrofluoric acid, one of the most dangerous chemicals known to humankind. So they use it in their refining of, actually, I'd asked this question to the staff, of super-high-grade oils. Not all gas uses hydrofluoric acid. And the question is whether there should be allowed to keep using that, because if you were several years ago, there was an explosion at one of the refineries. And remember that large tank came in, almost hit the canister of hydrofluor, maybe 10, 15 feet away. If it had hit that, and it exploded, we have films of this, I don't know if you've ever seen the film, it's a film of hydrofluoric acid, it's a, like a white cloud of gas. It hugs the ground about 10, 15 feet high, and moves about nine, depending on the wind level, nine to 15, 20 miles an hour. And they had some tests in the desert, and a couple of people were exposed to, it eats right through your skin. It eats right through your skin. And, or if you're exposed just to breathing, you can, so Torrance, I'm getting emails, sometimes 100 a day, from the residents in Torrance. Some of the residents, you know, some are supportive of the agents still using it. It's a big decision, should we phase it out over four or five years, or just put in some program where there's more protections? So it's a big debate going now, and we've had it for about a year or two. So in the next year, we're gonna have to make a decision whether just to phase it out over four years or allow them to continue using it. So I want to hear from your thoughts, if you have any thoughts on that, maybe read up a little bit on it. Let me know when ultimately comes to a vote, or represents you. It wouldn't affect us down here, but it would affect at least a couple million people within several miles of there.
No, it would spray, you know, not just the coast area, but even our area. So this is from Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio. And she said, "If there's a leak, it's gonna kill 250,000 people."
It could. It could, it could, because it moves so quick. If you would just watch the film of this cloud of, it's like a white cloud that just moves, and anything it touches, it just, I mean, humans would go through your skin. The schools have built what they call closing shelters, they just close the doors, they put stuff up. I don't think that would help. I really don't think it will. So it's, I've been meeting with groups down there, I've been meeting both sides, the refinery came over one day, and I've met with community groups several times. So I'm leaning on the side of a phase out over a reasonable period of time. It's gonna cost millions of dollars, but they make billions of dollars in income every year. So I think our public safety is more important, but if you tell me different, I'll listen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. No thunderous applause for that one. That's okay, we're all applauding you in our heart. Okay, so that's the, all the presentations we have. Next, we have public comment. And we do have two speakers' request cards, if you'd like to address the city council on a matter, not on the agenda, but within the San Gabriel City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Please come forward and fill out a speaker's request card. First is Crispina Bonzon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening to all council members. My name's Crispina Bonzon. I live at 500 East Saxon Avenue, which is here in San Gabriel. It's a townhouse property, and my issue tonight is the municipal code, section 72.048, which is issuing parking citations on a private property. We oftentimes get people in our parking lot at our townhouse property who are parked illegally. Some of the homeowners also, we have a limited time parking, and once that expires, they are considered illegally parked. And I've contacted the police department to issue citations, and they have informed me that if they do come out to issue a citation, I will also have to sign the citation with them. The problem with that is, some of those people may be my neighbors. They don't like that. They get angry when they get cited. And so I've asked if the police department can just do the citation without me signing so that I am not endangering myself. And they said that because of the municipal code, 72.048, the way it's written, is that I have to sign. So my first request is to please consider rewriting the verbiage, because this could be harmful for a lot of people. It could create a lot of animosity between neighbors. And the second part is, because that will take months or maybe even years before it's rewritten, I would like to be able to have citations done without endangering myself. I don't want to live in a place where, if I'm following the law and someone else is breaking the law, I have to be caught in the middle for this to work out. So I'm requesting to please rewrite the verbiage, number one, and number two, if there could be any special exceptions made for me or anyone else in my situation like this, if that could be done, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. We will take it under advisement, City Manager.
Thank you, Ms. Bonzon. I appreciate you providing the information before the meeting.
Yes.
I had a conversation with our Chief of Police, and he's in the lobby, and he'd love to talk to you about this.
Oh, yes.
To see if there's something we can work out.
Yes. Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. And my fault, we rushed into public comment without allowing the city clerk to introduce the items, so we'll do that now before the next one.
So for public comment, this is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as a matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. In an effort to provide everyone with an opportunity to speak tonight, please be aware that all public comments will be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. I will give you a 30-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers, regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to me before the start of the meeting. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Adam. So actually, I was mistaken, these two pieces of paper are identical. We only have the one speaker's request card. Does anybody else wish to speak during public comment? Okay, we'll have another public comment period at the end, so you can yell out the stand after the budget discussion. I now close public comment. Next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar. All items listed under the consent
The next item is consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or audience requests separate discussion.
Okay. Um, I need to pull item B2 just to abstain from, um, the minutes of a meeting I was not, uh, present. And also, uh, I want to pull item C for a small correction on the contract as well. Does anybody other, anybody else have anything else? Okay, so, uh, I was not present for, I was at ICSC for, on behalf of the city during the May 21st, uh, regular meeting. So I will abstain on that, um, on that approval. And for the contract on item C, um, I noticed it's set up for the mayor's signature, but, you know, I prefer that it be set up for city managers or appropriate, uh, department head's signature instead. And the other thing too is I think I noticed that while the contract is better, I, I, I still didn't see, um, although I didn't, you know, I sort of, uh, did the 30,000-foot, um, review of it. I didn't, still didn't see independent contractor provision in it, which I do think is important. Maybe not as much in this context, but in many other contexts it should be.
Yeah. Uh, can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Uh, due to the mistake that was made on that item prior, we went back to review, um, the process we had put in place to get standardized. This is, this has been an ongoing issue, I think.
Absolutely.
So, uh, we're working with staff to make sure that we got standardized agreements, not just for this, but in a variety of contexts. Uh, and I, my understanding is that we're at the point now where we've got drafts that are being shared and worked through. If you would like to take a look at those, it would, it would certainly speed up the process when we get to the city council meetings, you know, because you'll, you'll, you'll be familiar with the language and presumably have approved it. That applies, that offer applies to any.
I think there was a, you know, a fairly concise form that we had been using for the most part. And somehow or another, this one seems to deviate from, from that one.
There were some inconsistencies, I think, in the past as, as to what's been used. We're trying to standardize that, not just here, but actually across the board with all of our, our clients, both cities and water districts. So we're trying to take a, a very broad approach and get all of the attorneys sort of involved so we're all on the same page across the board. And that, this is kind of one of the impetuses for that effort.
Great. Okay. So, subject to those, uh, the comments that I made at the beginning, does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion and seconds. Go to the board.
Motion passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is, uh, item five, public hearing. There's none. Next item is, uh, new business. Uh, first item will be budget discussion. Presentation will be made by interim Finance Director Paula Chamberlain.
Welcome, Paula.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have before you tonight the proposed budget study session for the 2019-20 budget. Our topics for tonight include the introduction to the budget, authorized staffing, general fund overview, general fund revenue, all of our departments, other funds, capital improvement program, the city manager's recommendation, and then what's next. Our budget at a glance, general fund is 41.6 million. All the special revenue funds are 20 million. Internal service funds, 4.7 million, for a total of 66.3 million dollars. Uh, general fund is 63% of the total budget. And then when we add in capital improvements of 4.7 million, the total, uh, operating and capital budget for 2019-20 is $71 million. Just a quick look at the fiscal policies that we've put in place. The council adopted the fiscal sustainability policy on May 7th, 2019 by Resolution 19-16. Uh, some of the components of it were that we would have a, uh, revenues, actuals and sources, uh, sorry, actuals by sources and expenditures. Uh, actuals would be in the budget, which they are. The balance, the budget would be balanced, which it is. And all authorized positions would be fully funded at the start unless otherwise disclosed, which they are disclosed. Um, and the budget will contain, include contingent funding, which it does. We also have a fund balance policy that was adopted by the city council on the same evening. And it requires that we build a reserve up to 17% by 2018, which, uh, we will endeavor to do. Part of the fiscal sustainability policy was adopting guiding principles as part of the, uh, again, the fiscal sustainability policy. Some of the highlights for that is that the city budget must balance, that we must maintain prudent reserves, that it must be based on realistic estimates, and that we will make and report our financial decisions publicly. Uh, I'm sure you've noticed that the document has some format changes in it this year. Uh, the budget message was reformatted to flow with the document. So if someone only has the opportunity to look at one thing, the budget message is it. It will take you through everything that's within the document behind the, the budget message area. Uh, it expanded budget summaries section, including a list of transfers in and transfers out, so we can flow, uh, see the flow of money from one fund to another. The revenue estimate notes have been expanded to include how the calculation was made, um, some graphs for the major revenues and, um, what the, uh, source of the revenue is. Historical actuals for revenue and expenditures have been included. We have a comprehensive personnel section. Summary of the capital improvement program has been included in the operating budget in case you don't have the CIP handy. Um, we have object totals presented at the fund, department and division level. Uh, a lot of new object numbers and a few new funds. Lion item details for specific counts, same as prior year, but a little more detailed, uh, with the history along with it. Extensive details on all special revenue funds, including fund balance charts and a few typos. Citywide budget changes. Um, all health insurance now is budgeted based on the employee plan selection up to the maximum provided by the city. Uh, in the past, it was budgeted at the maximum amount, so this has saved the general fund budgeting, um, some money there. Life insurance and long-term disability is now a component of personnel and is combined with Medicare and the other benefits object code. Bilingual pay is now a component of earnings, full-time employee object code. Overtime has been split into multiple object numbers. There's, um, overtime regular, overtime sworn, overtime court and overtime reimbursement or reimbursable. Employee separation payout has been combined to one budget account and will be distributed as necessary. Retirement costs have been split into three object codes, normal cost, unfunded liability and a replacement benefit. Um, and each one of those is expensed differently. The normal cost is part as a percentage of salary. The, um, unfunded liability is a flat dollar amount that the city has to provide no matter how many employees we have. And the, um, um, I'm sorry, the replacement benefit is a payment that we make one time a free year for some, uh, employees that were highly compensated as they retired. Um, we have an after-hours education reimbursement that has been removed from all the departments and is now only in the, uh, new division of non-departmental and will be distributed as necessary to those depart, to those employees that take advantage of that. Allowances, local meetings, expenses and a portion of education have been combined to a new object called staff develop, development. Um, we found that as we were going through the budget, uh, everybody was using that, those three numbers for, uh, like accounts. So we just decided to combine them all together and, um, so everybody could see where everything was. Various accounts have been renamed for consistency and ease of review. And then large contracts, uh, service budgets have been moved to individual object numbers. And transfers in and out have been split between separate object codes, um, operating transfers out and CIP transfers out. We were able to accommodate some, uh, new things in the budget, but most things would be, uh, put off to future years. I'm sorry, wrong page. Um, for the supplemental budget requests, we have, um, we did a true-up in all of the accounts. So we had found that some of the accounts were expending money, but, or some of the departments were expending money, but they had never had a, a budget that had been trued up to the amount that they'd been spending in the last couple of years. So these were true-ups to what they actually had been spending. Um, the balance of the outreach and educational program for the, um, ballot initiative that's going on in, in November. There's a pool vacuum, uh, to replace the warrant equipment. The addition of three field training officers, special pay component. Um, the cost of two elections, which is estimated to be 547,000. We have in here some equipment for police and fire to be leased, uh, with a lease purchase plan. So at the end of the lease period, the, uh, the equipment is automatically, uh, an asset of the city. The, um, and for other funds, those were all the general funds. For citywide funds, there's a grant application writing project, sewer video inspection and test equipment, a changeable message sign trailer and, uh, aerial bucket truck. We were able to accommodate a lot of things, but not everything. So here's a list of things that, uh, the departments have requested but are not recommended in the budget at this time, basically just because we didn't have enough money. Um, it's 1.7 million dollars of, um, requested items and then another 450,000 dollars of items that were deferred for future years. So they weren't requested to be in next year's budget, but they were put on the radar for us to know that they were sitting out there to be funded at a future time. Moving on to authorized staffing. Uh, we have a new comprehensive authorized staffing schedule that's in your document. The current full-time staffing level is 195 people. We have proposed three new positions and 11 title changes. Two positions are unfunded, the admission playhouse director and a management analyst within the finance department. One position is partially funded. The fire chief is funded for only six months, awaiting determination of the, um, outsourcing of the LA County, to LA County Fire. This is a quick, uh, quick statistics. 29.8 million dollars in general fund is for personnel costs. Nine million is in retirement costs of the nine million. 56% of it is for the unfunded liability and 28% is for the normal cost. And then the bottom chart is by, uh, personnel by department. As you can see, uh, police and fire do, uh, have most of the employees within their departments. Recommended staffing changes. As it said, there is three positions that are being requested. Project manager and public works inspector to be paid from the sewer, uh, capital project funds. These will, uh, take over some of the project management duties that we are now outsourcing to, uh, contractors and, uh, will be paid within the CIP projects. The maintenance worker one slash two will be paid from the sewer fund. The title changes are title changes only. There is no compensation with this and no one will be getting any, uh, increases with the change of these titles. It's more for just some cleanup of, of, um, categories such as the maintenance worker one and maintenance worker two. We want to make a maintenance worker one slash two to give the departments the ability to hire at either level based on their needs and the capabilities of the employees that they're hiring. And that's basically what all of these are, are just combining them into a classification, um, with the flexibility. Moving on to the general fund. Taking a look first are how we're gonna end 1819. These are our year-end estimates. We started the year, uh, with 42.8 million dollars of estimated revenues, expenses of 41.5 million. We had estimated to put 1.2 million dollars towards fund balance. Uh, we've had discussions before that the estimates were not as realistic as we had hoped. The revenue is now estimated to be 39 million dollars with expense of 30 point, 39.15 million dollars, a difference of 413,000 dollars negative. Um, this is a difference of 3.6 million dollars of revenue estimates short of what we had originally projected and 2 million dollars of expenditures, less than what we originally predict, projected. Um, these are conservative estimates, so our revenues could be coming in a little bit higher than this, um, but we don't promise anything. So, um, this is our, our worst-case scenario, I think. We do have some options to help this out. This is kind of a look at, uh, how we arrived at our numbers. The fund balance at June 30th, 2018 was the negative 2.6 million dollars. Our revenue estimates, uh, estimated year-end estimates are 39 million, expenditures 38 million, and then the rest of it is the CIP, related to the CIP. Um, that got us our beginning balance of 3 million dollars. In your document, it has an estimated fund balance beginning of 3 million, uh, negative 3 million dollars. It actually should say available balance rather than a fund balance. Because the CIP amount there for the 633,000 dollars, I'm sorry, the carryover to, uh, 2019-20 will not affect our fund balance at the end of this year, but it does affect what's available. So the first column is what would be available going forward. The second column here is actually what fund balance may look like when we actually close the books.
And just to clarify here, Paula, we're still solely in the general fund.
Yes.
This is all only about the general.
All general fund. Uh, we have some recommendations. We would like to move 482,000 dollars of Station 52 upgrade, um, out of the general fund and into the development impact fee fund. There is money there to cover that. 286,000 dollars in general fund expense of, uh, CIP carryover and some expense would also be moved to the, um, development impact fee fund. There's 104,000 dollars remaining in a project for Delmar rehab wells, but it's been closed since 2016. So we ask to close that and then delete 52,000 dollars of general fund funding for great street projects since that's just kind of a whole place for all the streets that we're doing in the, the city. If we do all that, then our estimated available becomes 2 point, a negative 2.4 million dollars, down from that million, uh, 3 million dollar deficit. And our year-end fund balance would be close to negative 2.1 million, which is an improvement over the beginning 2.6 negative amount. Is it clear?
That bottom line there should say 52K, I assume, not just 52 dollars.
Yes, I'm sorry. 52,000.
Okay.
This is a history of revenues over expenditures. Uh, beginning in 2010-11, we had brought in 2, 2.2 million dollars more than we spent. And then you can just see through the years, um, coming down to the, uh, 15-16 and, uh, 16-17, 17-18, where we were spending more than we were bringing in. The, uh, big increase here for the 5.1 million dollars does include 4.9 million, I'm sorry, 7.8 million dollars of, uh, proceeds of loan and 900,000 dollars of sale of, uh, prop A funds. Just kind of a snapshot of what's been happening over the years.
And again, that 7.8, that's for the public works facility, right?
Yes. Fund and cash balance, just another snapshot of where we've been. Um, kind of taking a historical look where we were going up, uh, through the years and then the decline on down to where we ended up with the negative 2.6 million. And then year-end cash balances, again, we had an influx of cash when we borrowed the money and then, uh, when we spent it out on the projects and then continued through. Going forward to 2019-20, this is general fund again. Revenue is estimated at 41.6 million with expense at 41.6 million with a balance of 10,000 dollars. Looking at where our money comes from, property tax and retirement tax are, uh, pretty close. Property tax and retirement tax are pretty close, followed by sales tax, UUT, TOT. Where our money goes, you can see by this chart here, 58% of it goes to public safety, followed by public works at 13% and then legislative support, which is the city council, administration, city clerk, finance, and HR at 11%. Looking at category, out of the $41.6 million, 72% is personnel. $2.6 is operational, $3.2 is contracts. $864,000 for utilities, $3.9 of allocations, which is pretty much liability and workers' compensation and fleet. And then debt service of $415, which is primarily the debt service on the public works yard and the two lease payments that we had recommended. And then transfers out of $746,000 is for the mission playhouse. Looking at general fund revenue. Again, just a history of the revenue growth coming in through here. The green bars are the loan and Prop A proceeds. The red on top are transfers in from the retirement tax fund. And the bluish purple are the revenue. As you can see, we budgeted in, or in 17, '18, we received $28.8 million of revenue. In 17, '18, we received $28 million and we budgeted $34.6 million. Our year in estimate is $31 million and going forward, $32.6 million. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
I just realized why, you know, why the eight points, it says 8.7 rather than 7.8. It's the 7.8 million loan for the public works yard plus the $900,000 in Prop A exchange.
Correct. Estimated revenue, we were realistic but conservative, using a variety of techniques. Property and sales tax were prepared by consultants. Other taxes were based on trend analysis. Departmental revenue was prepared by the respective staff. And most special revenue tax estimates were provided by LA Metro or the League of California's analyst. Taking a look at our general fund revenue for 2019, '20. Taxes are $24 million, or 58% of our revenue coming in. The next one is our transfers in, operating, also tax related since it's the retirement tax fund. And then all of our other revenues from the variety of sources showing here. Just a quick snapshot of the history of our revenues coming in. Our number one is actually the transfer in from the retirement tax fund. Number two is property tax. Number three is a property tax in loop, which was the old vehicle license fee that was swapped with property tax. Property transfer, transfer tax is just shown on here because it's part of, a component of the property tax related revenue here. But all of these bring in $20.3 million or 49% of our total revenue. Following that, our fourth revenue source is UUT. You can kind of see it's relatively flat coming through. Number six is TOT. You can see that it's been on the rise and will continue to rise. Number five is sales tax, again, relatively flat, but still stayed, coming in well. Our sales tax for PSA, or PSAF, is the public safety tax component of it. And it's also been on the incline just at a lesser amount. Business license is just shown here for information. It's, most of our tax is based on a flat amount rather than gross receipts, so the growth does not grow as much. It's just based on new businesses coming in. And then building permits, you can see is rather cyclical, follows a cycle, sorry. That depends on what's going on in the community at the time. Going forward to looking at our departments. City council. It's budgeted at $237,000. The changes for the council this year is we have moved, or we've added meeting expense, object number, and added a fund meals and related expense line item. The expenses related to conferences and meetings have been moved to individual object numbers with $9,000 in each object. Looking here, you can see our expense history is been growing and is going back down. Budget allocation, again, staffing and operations split with most of it in the staffing cost. And then you've had a steady five panel council. Kind of taking a look at the reconciliation of that allowance account or staff development now for the city council. In the past, we had staff development of $35,000 and local meeting expense of 13 for a total of $49,000. We have taken that and split it into the five accounts per council person for a total of $45,000. We have the authorized conferences that will be determined as a public funding of public benefit for 2019, '20 and it's basically the same as in prior years. Looking forward at administration, there were no changes within the department. It's $616,000 made up of two divisions. The history of the expenses has been going down. The majority of the cost is staff related. And again, there are three people in the department and it's been consistent. City clerk is budgeted this year at $1.1 million, nearly $1.2 million. Has two divisions and the biggest change here is funding for two elections at $547,000 for the election in both November and March. City attorney has been moved from a component of the administration to its own department. And we've broken the cost of the attorney into three different divisions or three different object numbers. One for the retainer, one for the prosecution, and one for other legal costs for a total of $294,000 as a beginning budget. Finance moves animal control from finance department to the non-departmental budget. Removes funding for vacant management analyst. Merges city treasurer and purchasing divisions to finance divisions. Has a true up of a contract service in technology, so there's not an increase in the cost of it, but it is a true up from what had been budgeted in prior years. Again, there's our expense history, which is the deletion, primary deletion of animal control from the department. We are mostly staffing, 69%. We have 10 people within the department and that does include the elected city treasurer. Human resources is budgeted at $622,000, just has the one division. The salaries have been split this year for two of the staff members between HR and risk management. All pre-employment services have been consolidated to HR. We found some in some other departments as we were going through them and consolidated all into HR. Employee events has been moved out of HR and over to non-departmental. And their contracts have been split between general, other legal, and pre-employment. And then there's a complete reorganization of the risk management function that will cover further on. Again, most of their staff, or most of their cost is staff related. Non-departmental, this is probably the biggest change. It's been elevated to a department status. It has two divisions, one for citywide services and one for community engagement. It's a complete overhaul of the non-departmental division that had been in there in the past. And it now holds the animal control contract, which is estimated to increase or scheduled to increase from $195,000 a year to $264,000 a year. The total budget here is $2.5 million. Staffing costs is 67%, but that is mostly, or almost exclusively, the retiree health cost. In the non-departmental and the citywide services, it has the retiree health, the replacement benefit, separation payouts, after hour education on a citywide basis, employee events, animal control, property tax admin fee, which we had talked about last time, used to be deducted from the property tax revenue, but now it is shown as an expense. Mis-saneous insurance allocations for like pollution, unemployment, and then a contingency amount for things that arise through the year that the city manager and the city council need to handle. And the community engagement list, this is a partial list of the events that the city does. It's still under construction. We will be accounting for all of these events and the other ones that come, arise for community engagement to be able to tell you how much it actually costs to put on all of these special events. Police department includes funding for three additional field training incentive pay. It's not new officers, it's just an incentive that goes on top of it when they are actually performing field training officer duties. It includes $23,000 estimated lease payments for vehicles. That's a half-year payment. We estimate that we won't be able to go out and to bid and buy the equipment and get it all leased until at least mid-year, so those are only two of the four payments that would be in there annually. It splits overtime accounts into overtime sworn and overtime court time. Uniform allowance has been moved from uniforms to the salary account. Again, the primarily cost of the department is staffing. Fire department is $9 million. Includes 7,700 for lease payments for cardiac monitors, again, half-year payments. Splits overtime into overtime sworn, overtime reimbursable. And that overtime reimbursable is offset by a revenue of the same amount. This is the amount that when they provide fire service for the wildfires and we get reimbursement, it'll be shown here so we can see exactly how much we're getting in versus how much we're paying out. It splits dispatch services from contract services, so we can see that major contract cost from year to year. And it adds ambulance billing costs, which was previously set as an offset to revenue. So it was reducing the amount of revenue we were actually receiving and not showing it accurately. So now we, the whole revenue is going into the revenue count and the expense is shown as an expense. Again, staffing is 80% of the cost and staffing has been constant for at 36 staff members. Community development does not have any major changes within it this year. It's $3 million and again, staffing is a major component. Public works, split street sweeping and tree maintenance services into separate object numbers. Move streetlight portion of utility electricity from admin to street services. It's $5.2 million. The costs remain pretty constant, staffing 57%. And the staffing request is go from 32 to 35. This is where the three new positions will be housed with the, two of them being charged to CIP and one of them to sewer, so none of those costs actually are reflected in this budget since this is only general fund and all of the other ones are in the special revenue funds. Community services, moved events to non-departmental community engagement. It is proposing some increases for swim fees that will be brought to the city council in July 2019. $1.3 million, 70% of it is staffing. Mission playhouse on not a general fund, it is a major department of the city. And it's budgeted at $1.5 million. General fund subsidy is $683,000. It has an estimated deficit of $454,000 at the end of this fiscal year. Will be, need to be addressed at some point and maybe can be discussed when we have the session at the next council meeting. And again, staffing is 78% of those costs. Other funds. In your budget document is a whole section on special revenue funds. And each special revenue has its own page that will give you the history of it, show you the fund balance charted out for you and just provides information of how it was calculated and what the description of the fund. There are 24 special revenue funds, budgeted at $24.6 million. Internal service funds, $4.7 million. All of them are balanced this year, but three of them do carry deficit fund balances. Looking through at the special revenue funds that are transportation and construction related. We had a study session a couple of weeks ago that went over most of these. The transportation related ones, the estimated revenue are $4.9 million with the development impact fee that has a variety of construction type monies coming in at estimated at $837,000 for a total revenue estimate of $5.7, or nearly $5.8 million, balanced against $4.8 million of appropriations and transfers out. Special revenue funds that are CIP and capital, special projects funds. These are the ones, it's kind of a holding account that we budget the CIP in and then the money is transferred in from all the other funds. So you can see here, there's no beginning balance. It has estimated revenues of $4.6 million and $875 for the special projects for a total of $5.5, balanced with appropriations and transfers out of exactly the same amount in the year with the zero amounts as well. Special revenue funds that are operational are the retirement tax fund, which mostly gets transferred out to the general fund with some other funds to the risk management fund and the mission playhouse fund. The sewer fund, which receives its money from a sewer assessment. The mission playhouse fund and the community services activity fund. All of them come up to $11.6 million in revenue and $13.4 million in appropriations and transfers out. They do have a beginning fund balance of $2 million, so they still will end with a positive fund balance for the group of funds, $287,000. But as I mentioned earlier, the mission playhouse does carry a 400, or will carry a $454,000 fund balance deficit at the end of the year. And the retirement tax fund is down to $193,000 by the end of the year. The grants and police funds, these are basically what comes in, goes out. The supplemental law enforcement services account does have a deficit balance and we're looking into that because as I said, what comes in should be going out. So we're looking at that. And also the other grants fund, we needed to do a receivable for that a year and neglected to do that. So actually, it should have a zero beginning fund balance and will have at the end of the year. Internal service funds, we have two funds. Fleet services fund, which is the new title for it, and risk management fund, new for this year. The risk management fund has been split into three divisions, liability, workers' comp, and risk management. There's new objects created within the divisions to track expenses. Salaries have been charged to administration of the program. It's allocated departments based on, or the allocation of the departments equals the miscellaneous revenue that we receive for the operation of it and also what we've charged the other funds. Salary related to workers' comp claims remain in the home department. This is a change from how it was currently done. When somebody went on workers' comp, their salary was charged to the risk management fund. And then when we received two-thirds reimbursement from the JPIA, it went back into this fund. But the budget was in the home department. So beginning in this next fiscal year, the expense will stay in the home department where it's been budgeted and the revenue that comes in from JPIA will go back into the general fund or whatever fund actually paid for that person's workers' comp claim. Fleet services just has a new fund name and there is no contributions from future replacement, but other than that, everything is covered. We have a trust fund, this accessory agency, as we reported before, it does have a deficit fund balance and we're still looking into why it does, it shouldn't. So we just haven't had time to get into, explore that, but we will have it resolved hopefully shortly. Capital improvement program. A new format. The sheet shows the total budget approved by the city council and it is matched back to our Eden financial system. Non-CIP projects are not included in there anymore. Those are the pieces of equipment, new vehicles. Debt service have been taken out and not included in the long-range plan. The completed projects will stay in here for a year or will be referenced in a year, so it just doesn't disappear from one year to the next, so we can kind of follow it through. There's a new summary of projects by category in the summary section and also the first page of every section to show you what's in that section with the page number reference and then just kind of a quick glance at it. And some of the summaries that have been in there before have been removed or consolidated into other areas. Looking forward at it, we have $32.9 million of approved budget. We're adding, or recommended to be adding, $3.4 million this year. Looking forward to 2020, '21, 2022, '23, another $51.9 million. And beyond that, $138 million that we have not identified a funding source for. Total CIP is $226 million and there's 71 projects in there. CIP by project category, again, here's our $3.37 million that we are recommending for approval. The actual project cost is $4.6 million, but we are releasing appropriations in the streets area and the sewer areas so that they can fund other projects, so the net project cost is $3.37 million. This is a list of the new projects that are in there. There is one project that, let's see, which one is it? The under traffic signals, San Gabel Boulevard and Commercial Traffic Signal for the $255,000. It's on your agenda tonight for approval, so if that is, was approved. Okay, I'm sorry, is it on next to me? Oh, it's on the same night of the budget, okay. Well, I forgot that works. We won't have you adopt it twice, so it'll either be in this document or it'll be on the open session. CIP by funding source, sewer development is $950,000. They're releasing $1.1 million. Development impact, $460,000. Gas tax, 395. TDA Article III has been moved to its own fund. It was in a general fund, but it's basically a grant deserves its own fund, so it will be in its own starting next year. Prop C is $600,000. CDPG, $182,000. Waste Management, $150,000. Is releasing $163,000 from another project that has been completed. Traffic Road Maintenance, $550,000. Other Grants, 365. And Measure M, nearly a million dollars. Our conclusion. Changes from proposed document. I guess I jumped the gun here because we're not removing the $255,000 for the item that was on tonight's agenda. We will increase revenue estimate for fire services reimbursement by $50,000 to match expense. Right now, the revenue is 350, but the expense is 400, so we need to up that revenue estimate. We're increasing Public Works net budget by $15,000 for an on-call overtime in Streets and Parks Division and increasing Community Development's budget by $11,000 for staff development that was left out of the proposed budget. That leaves another $23,000 out of the $50,000 that we are adding to go to our available balance, which was $10,000, so now you have $33,000. City Manager Recommendation. Adopt the 2019 budget as presented or amended here. Approve three new positions and proposed title changes. Adopt the 2019-20 Capital Improvement Program. Accept authorized staffing positions for 2019-20. That's the major list that was provided in the document. What's up next? June 8th is the continued study session if needed. June 10th is a planning commission meeting for the CIP. June 18th is the public hearing for the adoption of the budget. That would include the resolution to adopt the budget, resolution to adopt the CIP, resolution for the GAN calculation and a report and resolution for the adopted annual investment policy. July will be bringing to you updated schedule. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you Paula. Just wanted to note that, you know, in various places it says something for approval, but there's nothing being approved tonight.
No.
I want everybody to know that, that this is a budget discussion only. It was agendized as such and at the end, after council discussion, you know, will just simply be council direction and receive and file. And I wanted to also just provide an overall background, I guess. Each of us, council members, has had a chance to meet with Mark and Paula individually to talk about the budget situation and the new budget documents. And I think, you know, what I can say is that after the release of the comprehensive annual financial report of the city for the previous fiscal year, so this would be the 2018-2019 fiscal year, which doesn't come out till like January or December or January of this year. Is that correct? Did we see that there was this negative balance in the general fund? It's a dramatic flip. It's actually like about $6 million of going from a general fund positive balance to a general fund negative balance. And a lot of that is due, as somewhat, you know, explained in the slides here, to overestimation of revenues that were not only for the current fiscal year, but a few of the previous fiscal years, which then, but without, you know, even though those revenues were overestimated and we were missing those revenue, projected revenue numbers in those years, we did not have a mid-year review process to adjust the expenditures for those years. So in essence, you know, if you, if you relate it to your own personal household finances, it's as if, you know, one person in the household started making less money or, you know, was laid off and didn't tell anybody else. And so you continue to spend the way that you thought you were making money, but yet you weren't making that same kind of money anymore. So, and there are many other operational details, which, you know, we don't have to go into all of those details, but as I understand it, you know, a lot of changes have been made at the operational level. So I want to commend Angela and Shaw right in the back, as well as Paula, all the members of the Finance Department for going through a lot of these changes and accommodating them. I think, you know, as a whole, as an organization, there are times when you're so used to doing something in a particular way, you don't know what else is out there. You don't see what kind of practices there are or what best practices are. And so that is... Oh, I'm sorry. So let me just go back then and thanking Linda, Linda, sorry Linda, and Shaw. But, but, but I, what the point I was trying to make is that, you know, you get so used to doing things in a certain way, not realizing that actually you've had the blinders on and there are better ways of doing it. So in the conversations that at least I've had and, you know, all of us here on the dais will get the opportunity to discuss and I think that, you know, operationally what we have now or what, you know, these changes will go towards having a more transparent and more accountable budget. We had never done a mid-year review of finances before, at least not since I've been on the council, and we should, especially comparing what the CAFR numbers, that comprehensive annual financial report, you know, it's called the CAFR. What the CAFR shows, you know, what were our revenues and expenditures for the previous fiscal year compared to what we were projecting, you know, and what we thought was gonna, what we budgeted against essentially. And I understand maybe some of the department heads who are here can maybe nod their heads and that, you know, there's a lot more responsibility now at the department level in terms of managing, setting your budgets and also being involved with the revenue estimations, which I understood also did not occur before. Mind blowing. So, so, you know, there are some, you know, specific reasons why I think that some of those, some of those overestimations or pulling numbers out of the air occurrences happened. But, you know, clearly that's not a way to manage the budget of a city and, and I liked, and for members of the public who are here, if you do nothing else, these are the proposed budget documents that we will be discussing here. This is the operating budget and this is the CIP. Each, each of these booklets has an introduction. It would take you maybe an hour or so to read just those cover messages and that gives you a pretty good overview of each of those budget documents as well as what changes have been made from prior practice to what's happening now. So with that, do we want to take a break first before we do a discussion or do we want to just move forward? Move forward? Okay. Okay, so questions, comments from the council, please? Don't everybody jump in at once.
Okay, I'll start.
Vice Mayor Machaca, sure.
Well, I also wanted just to thank, first of all, Paula, because she's our leader here of completely revamping the financial reporting and it's so much better. I really appreciate the fact that everything cross-references, there's a lot of detail there and kind of taking the lead and making sure that we had as much transparency and nothing was hiding in some other, you know, buckets that didn't belong. And then, then we have our department heads. I'm sure you welcome having a budget because now you're much more accountable and you know what needs to be done and you can also have your comparisons to budgeted. And I just can't see how they were able to even run the department otherwise, so thank you to the, to the department heads for taking that on. I also appreciate community engagement. I know I've been mentioning this year after year. Mark brought that to my attention and I didn't realize I had, but I'm glad that we now have for all our events because they keep growing every year and it's so important to know, you know, what is it costing us? I mean, we're, we have signature programs and we have people from all over coming, which is wonderful, but we need to know what it's costing us at the end of the day so we can evaluate and maybe we need to remove some programs and bring in some new ones. So I commend community engagement for doing that. My question is, first of all, the staffing highlight, there's some information in these books and then in your slides, but I think it's really important to, to mention that, you know, we have all this great, in the beginning of every meeting, seems like we keep having, you know, lots of great news, which is, you know, we're promoting people, we're adding people, but at the end of the day, the staffing has remained the same. And that's been emphasized in your slides, that's been emphasized here, and I think sometimes people get the, in appearance, it, you know, people get the impression that we keep adding, we keep adding, but what we're doing is replacing those who have left, those who've been promoted. And the three that you just mentioned this evening for the Public Works, we're actually bringing it in-house and so that should save money at the end. So I think it's important to highlight that and so I'm glad you were able to kind of do it tonight in multiple ways. So that was the first thing I just wanted to state. The second is clearly the Mission Playhouse, you know, needs to be looked at carefully. There is a significant encroachment on the funds and I'm hoping we can take care of that sooner than later in some fashion, just having kind of the, one of those, you know, discussions about what we're going to do because the monies are significant of what is taking place there. And so we're kind of in a, in a good position because, you know, we do have a vacancy with the director and so that might be an opportunity to, as we work through it, you know, maybe there's something we can do to, to help reduce that encroachment. So the Mission Playhouse is definitely an area of high priority. Second, with regards to the retirement tax or what we pay out, how often do we actually review that? Because I know we do one in the beginning, we get an estimate from, I think it was HDL. How often is it, would you recommend that we review that estimate, just to make sure there's no surprises at the end that all of a sudden we need to pay more or is that not necessary? Is it?
Yes, we need to look at all the funds as we go forward.
But that one in specific is, you know, we do an estimate and then do we wait a year later and?
No, when we get our major taxes in, in December and again in April, May, we take a look at them and see how they're coming in, see how they appear or how they compare to last year, see if we're ahead or below or behind last year, or they should, I can't say what we did here before, but, and then you see how they're coming in. So yes, we look at them at least twice a year.
At least twice a year, okay.
We get little payments dribbling in through the year, but the two major ones come in and they come in the same time your regular sales tax, I mean, your regular property tax come in, so you'd be looking at them at the same time.
So do we go back to HDL and ask them to relook at our portfolio to, to provide estimates going, you know, for the remaining period or we just do it one time and then just compare as the monies come in in April and December?
We do it at one time, but then when they come back next year with our estimates, then they'll also give us an estimate for year end to see how it's looking. They also analyze through the year to see if there's any missing parcels or parcels that have been attributed to someone else, somebody that hasn't hit the tax rolls yet. It should be noted that the Sheraton Hotel still has not hit our tax rolls. They said it could take up to three to four years before it hits, so we haven't gotten any money from that yet. So, and we don't know when it's going to hit, so we can't plan for it. You know, we would certainly think it'd be here by now, but we haven't and Shaw's been very good in calling the county and asking, when is it going to come here? But they say, you know, it takes time, there's people that appeal and it hits here when it hits here. County works at its own pace, but they track those things for us as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me, let me try to clarify that though. So you're saying we haven't received any TOT from the Sheraton yet?
Not the TOT, property tax.
Oh, property tax, okay, sorry.
Yes, no TOT has been coming in.
Yeah, because it's increased from zero to much.
Yes.
Okay. And then, let's see. I also wanted to thank Paul and Mark for meeting with us in advance. I think that's just such a good way to spend the time as opposed to meeting probably on Saturdays or as a group. I think individually, there are certain areas that we like to focus on and so I really appreciate the time that you took to kind of work through it with us. I think it was extremely valuable. And then I, I will ask Mark, but perhaps you can discuss it maybe at a later time, but just wanted to see what the status of the ballot measure was because we do have, you know, $750,000, I think, in the prospective sales tax measure. And so would you like to kind of give us an update where we are with that?
I'd be happy to. I had that under my list of things to do in the City Manager Update, but it's very germane to the budget discussion. I had a call with FM3, the company that's doing our polling, and those polls just closed this week and so they have very preliminary numbers for me. I'll be able to share numbers with the council next week on whether they feel that a sales tax measure would be successful in November or in March and what kinds of concerns that the community has with the way the city does business. So I'll have that information for you and we would look to, if it looks favorable, we would look to put that on the agenda in July for a discussion with the council on whether to move forward with that agenda.
So if it's unfavorable, then we need to go back and find $750,000 of cuts?
That's correct. So in a nutshell, the budget you have before you is a very status quo budget. It has $750,000 of prospective revenue from the sales tax measure which you indicated. It also has almost that amount for an election for November and March. Not exactly an offset, but very close to that, but you're correct that come November, if we are successful with a sales tax measure, then we will start our budget process for the year after. At that time, talking about how we would look to get ourselves out of the reserve hole that we're in and then start to fund some of the projects that the council and the community have been asking for. Conversely, if we are not successful with a sales tax measure, then we will be coming back in November and figuring out how to cut $750,000 from the current budget and then what we do moving forward as a community with figuring out how to right-size our ship, so to speak.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay. I just wanted to touch base on that elections point as well. Actually, could you first remind us, when is the sort of latest that we may need to file or declare for such an election in November?
August would be the drop dead date. It's one of the first weeks in August, so we could do it on our first meeting in August, but I get a little antsy about waiting till the last minute in case there need to be changes or council has questions. So Sharon and I were working to bring that in either the first or the second meeting in July.
Thank you. And as I see it, maybe you can confirm whether or not this is, this perception is correct is that there are not going to be very many things on the November ballot. Therefore, for us to have a ballot measure in November, we, the city must therefore, would therefore need to bear... need to bear a kind of larger share of the cost of that election versus, so it's a sort of two opposing forces. One is like you would, we have to pay a little bit more to have a ballot measure in November, but we would get the benefit, if it's successful, we would get the benefit of a little bit more time in collecting that additional sales tax, as opposed to going out in March, where there's many, many, many other things on the ballot, including, you know, presidential primaries and things like that, where our share of the cost would probably be much, much smaller, as opposed to being like one of only two or three things on the ballot. So is that generally a correct assumption?
That's 100% correct. In rough numbers, an election in March is about half the cost for an election in November.
And I'll note, too, that what we have budgeted here in this proposed budget is the same cost for both March and November, and actually, it's a cost for both, correct? Whereas, we may or may not have to really shoulder much of the cost in March if there's nothing, city, oh, no, we will have something, sorry, we will, we will, sorry. Right, I guess that remains to be seen, right? So anyway, but the cost in March still should be relatively less than the cost in November, I'm going to assume.
I say yes, but I also couch that with we have not received an estimate from the county for March. They're not even talking to us about March yet. They've given us an estimate for November of about $215,000, if I remember right, I could be off on that from memory, but the March election, we've put in about the same, just to make sure we cover it, because I'd hate to be doing the same thing we've been doing in the past, which is not adequately proposing those kinds of expenses, but we're hopeful that both of those end up being a little bit over, and that we save on both of those elections.
Okay, great. Other customers?
Isn't there a concern about timing regarding that tax? Because we're trying to get it in before somebody else does and grabs the money before we can?
That also is 100% true. So one of the concerns that we have is that there is a cap in the state code for how much a district can charge in sales tax, and right now, with all of the tax measures that have been passed by the County of Los Angeles and the other districts, things like Measure M and all of the other funding measures for transit, those have taken most of that cap, so there is three-quarters of a cent left that we have that is in play for any of the local cities. And so if AQMD is one that was looking to come back with a measure, the county was talking about another measure potentially at the end of next year, if they come in and do a three-quarter sales tax, the city will be left with no ability to raise revenues. The other side of that is, we receive from all of the tax dollars that residents in San Gabriel pay, we receive about 17 cents on the dollar for all of those programs. So for instance, every resident pays a dollar for the homeless programs, for all the other great programs that fund countywide services, but San Gabriel returns only 17 cents on that dollar, and those dollars are extremely restricted, only for those uses that were approved by the voters. So if we are successful with a sales tax revenue measure, we would receive the three-quarters of a cent, and that would all go to the city of San Gabriel with no strings attached. We could spend it how the council desires. So yes, your short answer to your very short question is, if we don't do that soon or rather than later, that cap space will be eaten up, and we won't have the ability to do that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. May, is it okay to continue with my comments regarding the budget?
Absolutely.
I just want to express my gratitude to both Paula, the Finance Department, and Mark for revamping and making our budget much more transparent, much more understandable. So I think the average individual, including myself, understands it much better than before. I have, in the past, expressed my disappointment regarding not being able to, at this time, fund the Police Department, the new department, and I'm still disappointed. Part of me doesn't want to approve this budget, and I know we're not approving tonight because of that fact, but after having a very in-depth conversation with you, Paula, and Mark, you put my mind at ease, and certainly not giving me any timeframe, I know that's not quite available now, but putting my mind at ease that it is still a priority for the city to construct and make sure that we have a new police department as soon as we can. So I appreciated that. We are going to have to, I think a lot of us are having the same thoughts about Mission Playhouse. If things don't go as we need to have them go in the next couple of years, we're going to have to make some tough decisions, not just about the playoffs, but probably several other departments. And as Vice Mayor Machaca said about our community engagement, not only is it important for us to realize the costs involved for us at the city, but as I brought up to both of you, also the revenues that we're getting to offset some of those costs, because we do get significant revenues from resources within the community, and hoping those keep up, but there could be a day where maybe they won't. So we have to be realistic about, as Vice Mayor Machaca said, you know, are some of these community engagement programs, can they continue to go on? But overall, I just want to thank you. We do have a balanced budget and moving forward. I think we're still accomplishing a lot of our goals that we always set out to do, and I appreciate the, for the short time that you've been here, Paula, how you've just turned things around. So again, expressing my gratitude to you mostly, because it's because of you that you saw things that were hidden, that we weren't able to see when it was put before us, so thanks again.
Thank you, but I'd also like to share your thanks with my staff, because they've done a lot of the work for it, so it's not just me.
Thank you, of course.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Costanzo. Councilmember Leal.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Paula. Yeah, you did such an amazing job. However, I, I'm kind of puzzled, because I'm looking at the, you know, the sales tax measure, and we're going to spend $400,000 or more, and if we don't succeed, then we have to readjust, you know, how to take up that $750,000. So maybe the easier way is we can increase the utility user tax, but, you know, since 2008, we increased from 6% to 8%, okay? And, you know, right now, I think, for some reason, we used to get steady funding, about 400, 450, no, 4.5 million every year or more, but since like this year has been declined, I thought, well, you know, what happened to the decline of this utility user tax? Because we charge the same rate, and there are more people moving to the city of San Gabriel, how can it be declined? That's my question. Why is it being declined?
I'd have to dig down into the numbers a little bit more, but I know some of it has to do with telephones and people moving away from landlines to cellphones, and if they buy the providers outside the city, everybody does get a notification of our utility tax. We get checks in for like 23 cents for the month and those type of things, but I'm sure there's lots out there that we also miss, or not we miss, but, you know, there's millions of providers across the country. But I have to dig down into the numbers a little bit more to see that.
Okay, so, you know, one possibility is they use less utilities, for instance, the landline, you know, for telephones, or they don't watch cable TVs. But another question is, our sales tax also declined. So I was thinking, well, is it, we're losing population, or what's going on? I mean, trying to find out what is the reason. And, you know, since we're going to increase the sales tax now, three-quarter percent, and since we, our sales is less, and we try to ask people to pay more, and they would go, well, no, I'll just go to other cities for restaurants or to buy something with less sales tax. So, you know, is there a way we can find out why does sales tax also decline?
Well, sales tax is based on sales within the city, it's not based on population. So we take a look at what businesses have moved in, what have been moved out. At one point of clarification, the amount that we're paying for the election is 400 for two elections, not just the one for the sales tax. And as far as people going to other cities to get a cheaper rate, you know, with so many other cities around here having a higher rate, there's really kind of a hard, you have a hard time finding some other cities that don't have the higher rate as well.
That's true.
So I don't think you'd lose people from doing that. Also, when you sell vehicles, which is, you know, the high-money items, it's based on where you live, not where you buy it, for the additional sales tax. So even if you go to Cerritos Auto Mall to buy your vehicle, and San Gabriel has that additional sales tax, you still pay the additional sales tax. So it'll boost the revenue even beyond what our sales in San Gabriel are.
Okay. So one thing that I believe that we can do right now, okay, because we've been paying, I don't know, maybe more than $2 million, the payments to Citizen Business Bank, because we borrowed money since 2014, and that's $7.8 million. However, actually, we gave the bank $7.8 million to hold it, you know, and we untucked that, we gave them the money, we paid them interest, you know, 1.6%. And that just doesn't, you know, make sense at all, you know, because you have that money, why you want to borrow money? You tied up your own money, and you untucked that, you paid them.
We invested the money there, we gave it to them as a CD, so we are earning interest on it. You know, the mechanics of why it was done in that manner, I don't know, but it is just a financing source that the city chose to do at that time. They are not stuck with it, I mean, there's a balloon payment coming up in the next couple of years at that point, depending upon where the city is, they can refinance it with a bond.
So the maturity day actually is 2024 or '25, January 21, 2025.
That's a balloon payment?
Yeah, with 5.2 million.
Correct.
So, you know, still a few years, and we're still paying them.
Well, we're paying them.
I think if we can figure out how much is the prepaid penalty, you know, for that interest rate we're earning, you know, is 0.6, so it's very minimal. We're actually, we can just pay it off right now, and, you know, we don't have to tie up our own funding and paying all these interests. So I think maybe there's something that we can do it right away, and at least we have the, you know, we don't have to pay that $368,000 annually, so we can save the money for something else instead of paying the banks, you know, interest.
We can take a look at other financing options, but we don't have the money to pay off the...
We do, because we have the 7.8 million CD.
But that's still part of our cash balance, and that's still part of our fund balance. If you pay that out, then you don't have it anymore. We don't have the cash to pay it, because the cash is still in the city's name, the CD is in the city's name. If you look at our cash statement, it's still our cash. We don't have enough cash to take it out of an investment and pay off the loan. So if you wanted to do another type of financing, we can take a look into that, but we don't have the ability to pay it off.
And Paula, can you clarify, too? I mean, the term of the CD, is it for the entire term of the loan?
Until the balloon payment, they mature at the same time.
So in effect, if we tried to liquidate that CD now, we would incur some kinds of penalties, I assume?
Yeah, I, usually, it's the amount of money you would have earned, you have to pay back. I mean, we can take a look at analysis, obviously, Leif is paying more than the CD right now, we'd have to see how much we would have to pay in the penalty to see if it'd be worth it to take that money and invest it somewhere else.
But it seems the most practical option at this point is to try to refinance it, or potentially, I mean, if we wanted to pay it off at the time of the balloon payment, because then at least we don't incur the penalties in liquidating the CD prematurely.
Correct. Or when you build your police station, you could fold it into that and do everything at one time, or, you know, there's lots of options, but paying it off is not one of them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But I think, you know, because we already earned 0.6 interest, so if you calculate the interest earning that we have, it's really nothing, you know, so whatever penalty is minimal, but we can look into that later on. I also have a question about the retirement fund, because, you know, we paid the property tax, and that's, you separate them, right? You call the funded retirement fund, and then unfunded, you call this flat payment, right?
Correct.
So funded, of course, you know, this is pretty much the homeowners or property owners in San Gabriel paying for it, but that unfunded, how do you figure out? And how can we get the number, say, hey, by, for this, you know, year of budget, how much we have to come up with this unfunded flat payment?
The utility tax is paying the normal cost and the unfunded liability cost for this year, as well as the retiree cost. So the money you're bringing in with the fund balance you have is sufficient to pay, there's actually no general fund money going towards your retirement liability right now with purse.
Okay. Okay, another question, because I, it's regarding you, because you're so good, we want to keep you. But there's a problem, you know, so how long you still can work for San Gabriel?
It's up to the city manager.
Oh, okay, so we can keep you forever?
Oh, no.
No, because that question comes up with this, you know, the management analyst for Finance Department. So is that a very important position? Because we need to figure out, you know, how we can, well, not going to more debts, okay, because right now, we only have 10,000 cash flow, but it's really nothing, so...
We did it for cash, because, you know, finance always gives, because, you know, we're balancing the books, what can we give and all that? Not that the other departments don't, they all did great, but I always tend to cut mine a little short. But talking with my staff, it's been vacant for over a year and a half, and staff has been doing wonderfully with the position vacant, so I think we can continue to do that. I didn't want to eliminate it until you hired a permanent director and get in there and evaluate it, but I think it needed to be left vacant for a while to see how things work. The document this year was kind of a bear to put together, but going forward, it's already set up, the bones are there, so it won't be as difficult or as time-consuming in the future. So I think they could do it without the position, at least for another year.
Okay, that's good, that's good news. And so it comes to the same question about the Mission Playhouse Director, right? So I guess we have to figure out a way, you know, not to subsidize it every year, and it looks like we have a million deficit every year from the Playhouse. Maybe we lease it out to a professional, you know, corporation or whatever, and they can give us a million-dollar lease instead of, you know, we have to run it ourselves and come up with the more deficits. So that's something I think we can discuss in the future, because Mission Playhouse is precious, is a jewel in the city, and I actually, you can, you know, use it in a much better way, you know, instead of just losing money.
Councilmember Leal, can I respond to that very quickly? Rebecca has a consultant that she's brought on board to take a look at the Mission Playhouse, and we will be meeting at a study session on the 18th of June, so at our next council meeting, to talk exactly about the things that you've discussed. So we are bringing that right back to you.
All right, thank you. So my... So my, you know, all our job is try to, you know, bring in more revenue and reduce the expenses, so make sure our uh, yeah, our budget is healthy. But I, you know, I, I don't know if this is going to be sustainable, because if we look at the uh, public safety right now, the cost is about, what, fifty-eight percent? And I heard that before, you know, well, a couple of years ago wasn't that high. It was like uh, forty-eight, maybe, maybe forty-five? But now it's getting higher and higher, and every year, we've got to give, you know, salary increase, of course. And, but our revenue is not increasing that much, so I don't know. I, I think it's up to a percentage, maybe it's not going to be sustainable, you know, for a small city like San Gabriel, and to pay, you know, more than sixty-five percent uh, of our uh, general fund to um, public safety, I think it's going to be a, a risk, because I'm looking at our neighboring city. For instance, Temple City, Roseme, you know, similar uh, size with, with our city. But their, their expenses, maybe fifty percent, their staff is about half of our size. So that's something...
Every, every city is different. I've been in cities that had a higher percentage of public safety, so um, you know, the fifty-eight percent is um, not uncommon. The um, your revenues are increasing, your TOT is coming in good, if you get the sales tax initiative, that would be good. I don't think there's any set amount that you dedicate to any one function over another. You go with the needs of your community um, and, and balance from there.
Okay, so last question. See, we, we already have the budget for those three hires in Public Works, right?
Uh, well, there, two of them are, will be funded by CIP projects. So instead of paying a consultant, you'll be paying your own staff.
Okay.
The third one is being paid out of the sewer fund to do some necessary work there. So they're not general fund, um, and the, um, the money for the sewer one is added into this, and the one for the CIPs are already included in the CIP projects.
So, of course, you know, Public Works is very important, but number one is street payments, because everyone in the city, they drive by the streets every day. And the, that's the only thing, the first impression, that if the city is doing anything at all, is keep the streets paved. So, you know, I, I, I still um, agree, you know, we need to hire more people in Public Works, but we need to show our residents that we're doing something. You know, instead of, well, we're going to expand, we're hiring more staff, but residents will see that. You know, the only thing they can see is, well, if my street's being paved, yeah. So I, I, I think for uh, you know, capital improvement projects, I think we just need to put in more funding uh, into a street paving. So this way, I don't, you know, if, 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 if we don't do anything uh, to show our residences, and we just keep asking for self-tax or any increase of, you know, other property tax, they are not going to be happy, so... Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Liao. Uh, Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to just echo some of the comments from my fellow council members. Um, I do appreciate all the work that goes into this from everybody, um, as well as the one-on-one, or the two-on-one, uh, meetings, and I think they, they really do help um, answer some on-the-spot questions, and kind of just give us the general outline of where we are. Um, that being said, um, I spent my better part of Saturday and Sunday reading the budgets. A lot of concerning things. I think my overarching statement is um, we're saying it's structurally balanced, but that's including a prospective revenue.
Correct.
I don't think I can sign off on a prospective revenue, I don't budget things that might happen, I budget things that we can count on. So I would rather see a budget that doesn't include that, and if we are successful, we can add back some items that maybe we, we kind of earmark right now, we're taking this out, we're taking this out, we're taking this out. If it's successful, we're adding this back, we're adding this back, right? So I would rather see a real budget um, that has the cuts built into it, if, if, if worst-case scenario happens. That's how I prefer to budget, I don't, I mean, I'm just one vote. I can't sign off on um, hopes and guesses. I, I want to see something that we know what our revenue is going to be without, or we have a pretty good projection, I think we base our budget on that. If we come in better, let's add some things back. But we need to know now what we're going to cut, or at least show what we're going to cut, and adopt what we're going to cut. So we have a plan regardless of what happens with the tax initiative. I don't know what the consultant's going to say, but like Jason said, I have some concerns, because it's not going to be a very heavy, um, a, a lot of items on that ballot, which means there's going to be a lot of scrutiny, and people are going to give it a second thought, which puts the burden on us of educating the public of why we're doing this, and how it's going to improve the, the level of service that we give them relative to the dollars being taxed. That's just our job. Um, so I just don't like to assume we're going to, or even build it in, that's just my opinion. Don't count my chickens before they hatch, I grew up on a farm, so I can say that.
Hey, if I could, if I could add one comment. As I said, the revenues we do have in there were budgeted conservatively. The numbers that we got from HDL, I, I did my own analysis, and I think their numbers might be a little lower. I mean, they're less than what I think that we're getting in, and what I'm seeing. Um, we paid them to do it, and they are the professionals, so we went with their numbers. Um, and I did call them multiple times, are you sure these are the numbers? Because I was seeing a little bit higher. Um, not that I would want to count on that, but you're close to the end of the year now anyway, so we can kind of see how we're doing. Um, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not a, a huge significant amount to your budget that you couldn't recover from um, after the end of the year in August or September, or even in November when the election came through, um, that you would have to have mass cuts to, to make that up, especially if some of the revenues come in higher than anticipated. So I, I share your concern with the perspective, and that's why we put it in a separate line item, so it was right out there that everyone could see. Um, but I, I don't know um, that it won't be balanced against some of the other revenues that I think may come in a little higher.
I appreciate that, but I think we've gotten into this issue by, or this problem by overestimating revenues, and here we are saying we're overestimating our revenue. And that's just my, that's my concern with that. If the other items do come in higher, that's great, if it passes even better. But I'd rather be prepared for it not to, and then when it does, we can all celebrate. Um, that's just the way I think, I don't try to plan for a raise I don't have, I don't plan for revenue I don't have. I plan for what, I live within my means of what I know I'm going to earn or expect to earn. I'm not going to expect a tax to pass, I'm going to hope it does, but I'm not going to expect it. That's just, I mean, so when I see the budget, it's great, and I, I do see what you're saying about it's a line item, it's out there, but we are basing some of our spending on that. So that's just my, I mean, if there is a way to show some reductions in areas, if it's at all possible, I know we're very status quo, very thin, because we, we probably been status quo three, four years in a row now. I understand that, and I'm glad we've been status quo and not spending money we didn't have, that's a great thing. But at the same time, we're now, we're, we're kind of going down the same path in a different way. So instead of our right eye covered, our left eye's covered, it's like, we have to be both eyes wide open. You know, prepare for the worst, hope for the best. And I would share um, also regarding the Mission Playhouse, we've been talking about it for years. Um, we've kind of kicked the can down the road, kicked the can down the road, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. I would share Councilmember Lao's idea of let's at least put an RFP or something out there, that maybe we can find a production company, maybe we can find somebody that can operate it, turn it from a negative to a positive as far as revenue. I mean, obviously, the, the structure itself is great, it's a positive thing to have in our community, and maybe it deserves to be subsidized, but at least we can look at, is it possible to actually make revenue on it as a city? Leasing it to somebody, we wouldn't have to get a million dollars, we could do it for one dollar, that saves us four hundred thousand. I mean, honestly. So there's a lot of creative ways we can partner with a production company where we share in revenue, so it gives them an incentive, it takes a little bit off the top. And there's just things that can happen there, that if we're creative, we can, we can really do that. We've talked about it for years, we've never taken action, and I think this budget kind of forces our hand to do something with that. And I would love to see staff come back with some ideas. I mean, Rebecca, finance, I mean, anybody involved, I'd love to just see some great ideas on that, I think it's time. And, and I, I, one question I had as far as also the um, we move the debt service around? Is there a reason, I mean, because the debt service is only for capital projects, correct? We're not servicing debt on anything but crap, capital projects?
Um, we have the debt service on the um, um, Public Works yard, and debt service on the I-Bank loan for streets.
For streets.
And then we added some debt service for lease payments for the um, vehicles and the cardiac monitors.
That's added in this...
In this year's, yes.
In this year's, but previously, we've only had debt service on, is that why you're moving it out? We've only had it in, I, I understood why it was in the CIP, because that's where the money, the revenue and the, and the debt lined up.
I just moved it out of the CIP document, because it's not a construction project. I still left it in the same fund that it was being paid out of, but it's more of an operational account in that fund, rather than um, a capital improvement program budget.
Okay, no, I think it's just because I got used to seeing the revenue source or the, the loan with the actual item that was built, so I think... Oh, maybe I just got used to seeing that, so I had that question. I think I don't, I don't really want to go into details other than um, like, like I said, on Mission Playhouse, I really think we need to be creative. I don't think we're, we should be hiring a director right now, I think that's an expense we can uh, uh, afford not to have. Um, I don't think the value is there by, before we decide what we want to do of hiring somebody, so I don't, I mean, I see the positions open, so that's fine. I don't need to remove the position, but we don't need to fill it as well.
Right, it's not funded?
Yeah, I, I saw that. I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying, I, I think it's a, it's prudent to just leave it open. It, it is, it, it, it's, it's the right time and right place right now. And then um, as far as, as well as what Councilmember Lao brought up regarding the Public Works loan, what type of interest would we earn, let's say just the CD, are we earning around one percent?
We're earning point six percent.
I mean, if we took it, if let's say we, it wasn't in that?
Oh, Leif right now, Leif is the um, local agency investment fund, which is, you can get your money in and out of every day. It's run by the state of California, but it's, it's completely safe, um, is paying almost two point five.
Two point five, and what's the going rate to borrow seven million dollars?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm saying, I'm assuming it's more than two point one?
Yes.
And it's probably more than point six, probably more than three point?
Yes.
Yeah, my point is, we're actually, that loan is actually a very good loan, it just locks up our money, that's the idea. We're using cash collateral. Cash we would have in these funds anyway, so it's not like we would have already spent that seven million. It's not like we would be using that seven million. It's, it's money that we used as collateral, so I don't want to characterize it as, oh my goodness, we're out seven million dollars. We already, we already, we just, we decided to dedicate that money to borrow against our cash collateral instead of another type of collateral, because had we not put up, you can't get a loan without collateral.
Correct.
I've never found one, I don't know who just lends you money to build something with no collateral. So we, as a council, decided, let's do cash collateral with a point six margin, I think is a very, you're, you're actually doing well. It's a very smart way to borrow money, actually. If you could borrow money using cash, I mean, it's, it's done every day, it's cash swaps, there's, you know, all kinds of credit swaps, and lots of ways to do that, and I think it's a very creative way to borrow money. And I don't see it as a negative, and I don't want to refinance something when I don't believe we could come close to that margin if you take the, the opportunity cost of borrowing the money, funding a new loan, paying penalties on the old loan. I don't foresee a way of doing that, I, I, maybe I'm missing something? I, I mean, I do finance every day, so I kind of understand it, but I've never, I mean, I, I thought that was an excellent loan, so I didn't want to character, have it characterized here as a bad loan, so, so I'm honored to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Harrington. The thing I want to first, you know, um, ask questions and make comments, you know, related, piggybacking off of some of the comments that I've heard from the council. First, with respect to this Public Works facility loan, you know, if, if Leif is two point five percent, and we're currently earning point six percent uh, on that seven point eight million dollars in the, in certificate of deposit, that means there's a cost, there's an opportunity cost there at one point nine percent, correct?
Yes.
And in addition to that, we're paying a margin of one percent over the, on, on, interest on the loan itself, right? We, we're, we're earning point six percent on the CD, but we're paying one point six percent for the loan. Therefore, the total cost, uh, including the opportunity cost is really um, two point nine percent. Is that, is that accurate? So um, so, and, and, and then, you know, I wanted to clarify too, another thing that kind of came up in our, you know, uh, two-on-one meeting, um, which was that, and actually, to finance this loan, we didn't need to put up cash collateral. We could have leveraged other city assets, such as the Mission Playhouse parking lot, or the streets, or, you know, like, in general, is that, is that, is that actually true?
Or the facility you were building?
Or, or the actual, yeah, like, like you would when you're buying a house, or you're building a house. You take out a construction loan secured by the property and the project, right? And then you, uh, that, that's usually a sort of some form of gap financing. When it's done, you, you take out that construction loan with a permanent loan that's mortgaged by that particular property. So, so we didn't really, and we still don't need to have it be a cash secured loan, do we?
Well, it all depends on the interest rates that you would be borrowing with. I don't know what those are right now, if, if interest rates are six percent, then you know better off. So you would have to do some more research to see what the actual borrowing cost is right now.
I think at the time, it was about a four percent differential. If we had to put up the collateral, we, we went that route, it was about four percent more per year. So our, our payments would be much higher every month.
Sure, because cash secured loan is no risk, that's, you know, so that's, that's, that's why you get a lower rate.
So the theory there is we have the cash, it, it's going to be in a CD or equivalent anyway, so we're going to pay a little bit of a margin for that, so we're cutting our interest rate effectively two to three points.
And Leif is paying two point five right now, but in recent past, it's been a lot less.
Right.
So, you know, to evaluate it, you'd have to go back and look at all the facts at the time that you did it, to see what it would be. Looking at it now, you'd look at new facts to see if it'd be worth it to refinance or to leave it as it is.
And I would comment, if it hit its almost all-time high in the past fifteen years, we'd still be at a great margin, because as that, as Leif goes up, so does, so do interest rates. I mean, they're kind of, they're not exact, but they kind of flow.
I'm not trying to dispute at all that it's a low interest rate. We all know it's a very low interest rate, because it's one hundred percent cash, because secured, in fact, it's over-secured, because as we make payments, you know, we're paying down principal, um, that, now, so we put seven point eight million dollars over there that cannot be touched, and the principal balance is now something like seven point three or six, something, something in that, you know, neighborhood, maybe low sevens, right? So um, so obviously, hell yeah, if I, if I have seven point eight million dollars, I'll lend it to you if you give me seven point eight million dollars back, and I charge you interest on it. So anyway, um, I, we'll need to, I think, evaluate this, because I think that there, there is a, at least enough, uh, enough interest about what do we do with this loan um, going forward on the council, that we, that's something that we will need to evaluate, especially as it comes up for maturity, you know, in the balloon payment.
I was just going to mention, since it's relevant, maybe our city manager could give us an update, because I, I'll also ask if, if there was a way to refinance, and you actually spoke with the bank?
Currently?
Currently?
We did, uh, actually, Paula met with our, our bankers, and Paula and I can absolutely go back and, and talk to them about different ways, and look at our borrowing rates, and come back with actual numbers of what the current costs are, and have an educated discussion, that we can provide that input.
Oh, I thought you had already met with them.
We met with them about our banking, but not about the actual refinancing.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
I'm just writing some notes.
Something that Councilmember Liao mentioned about the utility users' tax, let me see if I can understand this tax a little bit better. I mean, I understand, you know, I'm about to ditch, you know, all, all my landlines and things like that, but what else does this tax apply? but what else does this tax apply to? Does a ta- a tax apply to cable, like cable television?
It's cable, it's electricity and gas.
What about internet service? Let's say I have Charter Communication, or whatever they call themselves now, Spectrum for internet service. Is there a tax associated with that? Is there a utility users tax associated with that?
Uh, let me ask staff. Is it on cable? Yes, it is on cable.
If it's on cable?
Yeah.
But if it's over, if it, let's say it's AT&T.
Stay alone.
Oh, Xiao, please. I see. That's a, that's a, because they have a monopoly in San Gabriel, we charge them. And, and have we looked at that franchise fee lately, and is it in line with like, uh, other similarly, similar franchise fees?
We can take a look at them, but most of them are set by code, by state code, not by city code.
Okay, thank you, Xiao. So, let me, let me go back to internet, because, um, you know, in the future, none of us are going to have anything but internet. Some of us don't have anything but internet now. How can we tax it?
I'll have to take a look at it unless the attorney knows. I, I know that, um, we did update the ordinance a couple of years ago to deal with the new communication systems that were coming forward, but I'm not familiar with it if it includes the, um, internet or not.
Okay, um, I just want to understand that, because I agree, and I've asked this question in previous budgets, why that UUT number seems to be declining every year? Okay, Xiao, please, drop some knowledge. Well, it is. I mean, it, it is, it has declined, if I go back to this slide here from two budget years ago, you know, and it, you know, it does look relatively flat.
It's, it's pretty flat.
But it, it's just, you know, so, but why would there be a spike in a particular year then?
So, from page three, it shows that, uh, 2018, 19 is 4.89, and this year is 4.5. So, yeah, the difference is about 380,000.
That, that's the budget from last year to this year, but if you take a look at the history of it, it's pretty flat. And it will have some, uh, variances on, depending upon how hot it is during the summer, how cold it is during the winter, uh, how much electricity people use, how much natural gas they use, so it does fluctuate a lot on the weather. If we have more rain, they're not heating their home, or, I mean, they're not air conditioning their home. So that's what would cause most of your variances within the utility tax.
I see, okay, I understand.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify for the public. All of our revenue projections, if you go into the document itself, they have a percentage that things have increased or decreased. We are showing that increase or decrease from the budget that we are currently in, the budget year, so the 18, 19 budget year. And as we've talked from the beginning of the meeting, those are over-implanted. So when we're showing some of these as being, uh, a reduction, it's really an increase over the history in the years past, or flat, as in the case of both UUT and sales tax, both of those are almost dollar-for-dollar flat over the last two years, and what we project this year to be and what we project next year to be. But because of the fact that we count our numbers of next year towards this year, and we use the budget, it makes it look like we're actually declining in revenue, but in reality, if we had been using realistic or conservative numbers, it would be staying the same, or, or increasing.
And just to confirm though, the, the, these charts and what was presented, these are actuals, correct? Not just budgeted numbers?
Well, the budget number is in there, but all the others are actuals, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, and then before I go into my specific questions, um, let me take a poll of the council with respect to, um, Councilmember Harrington's suggestion that we, because this, it would represent a really dramatic change, not only in the terms of the budget documents, but also in what we do from here going forward, of whether or not we wish to approve, continue to discuss a budget that includes 750,000 dollars of prospective revenue, or do we want to go back and say no to that and, and, and identify what we would? In, in essence, it's almost like, it's almost like a, a bid to an RFP where you have an additive, you know, portion, where the base bid or the base budget will be X, and then if that 750, you know, uh, is, is there, or, or even if it's not feasible to, you know, to do the measure or pass it in November, and, and we decide March would be a better chance, you know, then that number would essentially maybe be zero, because we wouldn't collect any of that prior to the end of the fiscal year. So, so I, I want to just get a sense of that, because, I mean, Councilmember Harrington, and thank you for bringing up, because, yeah, I mean, I.
Well, I'll just give you a little of my strategy as well, Jason, simply because part of the educating the voters, they need to know what happens if that doesn't pass. And that's a document we can actually point to as a council, saying, we've planned for this not to pass. We hope it doesn't, you know, it doesn't fail, but this is where we will be if this isn't. That is a quote-unquote "education of the public" without politicizing it. It's a fact.
That's interesting.
It's, people can look at it, we can use it as a tool, and it, and so, we're adopting it, but it's actually strategically, it's like, this is where we will be, and the public will know.
And here's the pain that will occur.
Yeah.
The exact pain.
So we're not, we're not saying it's, you know, we would have to find it somewhere, this is the best attempt we've had.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of my thinking, that's why I like to plan like that.
All right, other members? Because I, I'll say this too, if, if we decide to go that route, we will definitely need to have the study session on Saturday to make those determinations, and then that would also require a complete revamping. I mean, maybe not dramatic, because this is already a complete revamping of the budget documents that we had before, but it will necessarily require a lot of changes. I mean, so at lea- at least several, some, some changes. Because even though 750,000, I mean, I agree with, with Paula that programmatically, we could make mid-year adjustments, you know, if that isn't, if that doesn't happen, to, um, account for it, if, um, but, um, but if we decide to program it now, then a lot of things would necessarily probably need to change.
Well, I mean, even if it's as simple as just cutting a couple of things off the CIP, like literally just hacking it off the top. I'm not saying 10% off everything, but like, here we go, we're not doing these streets.
Or it could all go into streets, we have 750,000, I mean, you can make it really simple, or you can go across different departments. I mean, that's.
I'm just referring to simple approach.
Yeah, if I could just make a comment, there are no projects in the CIP that are funded by general fund. We've already stripped all those out, um, so that wouldn't help. And if we reduce it just out of streets, we do have a maintenance of effort requirement to get measure M money. So if we cut it below a million and three, we don't get that money. So, you know, there's little hooks on everything we have.
And that contribution, I think, is actually from the general fund, it's rather small, something in the 100,000, 130,000.
Four.
To meet the, uh, measure M requirements.
There's a million and three in the, um, general fund for all those type, um, projects, including, um, electricity to run the streetlights and just general maintenance, fill in the potholes and those type things. And if you cut any of that, they do do an audit every year, it's an independent audit by the state that, um, they'll stop giving us our measure M money.
So I mean, yeah, I remember something about that, and so we were talking about we need to cut 750 of personnel, probably, or something else.
If, if I can perhaps propose an interim step, you are right that there are very few, um, pots that we would be taking from. 750 isn't a huge percentage of our budget, so there's ways that we can do it, but it would be not easy. Perhaps the interim step would be for staff to go back and to work through the budget and identify if that measure wouldn't pass, where we would propose taking those cuts from. And we could pre-identify those now and, um, present those to council as an option to, um, enact in November if we are not to be successful, or if we aren't going in, in November and March.
But to, to Councilmember Harrington's point, it's, it's then, I mean, wh- wh- this would maybe be in the form of like an addendum to the, to the current budget. If X, then, i- if this doesn't happen, then these are the things that would be cut?
We could work on two-pronged approach. We could work on, here's what we could sort of hold off on now. Anything that we would be able to put off until after November when we had an election and were successful or not. And second thing would be things that we could cut throughout the year that would help us reach that, uh, balance point in November if we needed to, and we could present that to council. I'm not sure we could get together as a team and do that by, um, Saturday, but we could certainly do that by the 18th.
It, it, what's the level of difficulty? I mean, is it hours and hours and hours and hours, or it's something you could probably do, working in a few hours? Because I don't want to put a huge burden on staff if it's something that's going to be a giant project.
Hours and hours and hours, but yes, um, I mean, I don't, what would the delta be?
As, as far as time goes, it would be sitting down and all of us sort of having a pow-wow about what our strategic thinking would be on that and presenting that to council. It's not hours and hours and hours and hours, and we could present a list to council. Paula, do you have thoughts off the top of your head?
No, it would just be, uh, you know, assembling the executive team and finding out what can be cut. I, you know, going through this, I don't see a whole lot that can be cut, but, um, and, and that's why, one of the things that we did put in this budget this year is a consolidated, uh, roll-up of all the accounts to show you by category, uh, how much, um, discretion we actually have. And unless you're going to go into personnel at that time, um, there's not a whole lot in operations. But given that, and following council directions, we can certainly go through and see what it could. It could be just a matter of holding positions vacant until, uh, we know.
Well, I, I think I, I tend to favor this approach that's being proposed here, because it, you know, prepares us for the possibility, the non-zero possibility that, you know, that this, either we, it doesn't pass, or we're not able to pass it in time for it to hit this next fiscal year's, uh, budget. And, and I'm one, so, I, 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 I think I, I like that idea, because it shows, it also shows too, the reduction in services that would ne- be necessary, you know, for this, to, you know, Councilmember Harrington's point. I know it doesn't necessarily fully address your principle of not approving a budget that has, you know, prospective revenues, but it would at least show us how we would be, how we're being fiscally responsible, and, and if, in fact, those revenues don't materialize.
And also it's not speculation at that point. We can point to something, educate voters, like, here's what we're going to have to do. And in the future, this money is, it, it's going to get absorbed by someone else. That's part of the education, where Mark says we get 17 cents on the dollar. Or we can say, hey, let's, let's fund all this stuff and have this as a continuing revenue source into the future. It's kind of like, most, I, I'm not going to say that most people don't even come close to knowing where our revenue comes from.
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's a huge educational thing, and if, if we can do some very basic saying, we can have this or not have this. It can go, all go to other people in the county, even though we're paying it, or it can go, come back right back to us. So it's kind of, you have to do very big sweeping ideas, like two or three main ideas. We start getting into the weeds, and people are going to go to sleep.
Well, absolutely, I totally agree, that would be part of the education. But as far as how we want to handle, um, this year's budget, can I get, uh, other council members to weigh in? Do you agree, it seems like Councilmember Harrington, I, we agree, we could, if we do this, um, I don't know, addition, an addendum, or additional pages or section, perhaps to the budget, you know, that says if.
Like a no-pass scenario.
A no-pass scenario, right.
Can I add, I'm sorry to keep popping in?
Absolutely, please.
One more comment?
You're the expert.
When we met with each one, I think I talked about, uh, a budget that is structurally balanced, because we have more revenue than expenditures, but I think the other comment that Paula and I made was that it isn't sustainable.
That's true.
That we're not able to backfill the, the biggest important thing, the 2.5 million dollar deficit that we're in. And so that 750,000 dollars, 700,000 dollar number is only the tip of the iceberg if that doesn't come in. We don't have any backfilling for fleets, so all those vehicles are aging, we don't have any money to pay for those, so it's.
I think that's a good candidate for cut.
Yeah, we pulled all of our one-time tricks this budget.
This is.
Like, we can't do it twice.
This is a, a budget that is balanced on as many cuts as we can make without cutting personnel and services to the community. So we do need to work on an education campaign that, that rightsizes us without that funding for this year, but then we also would have to figure out how quickly we would be able to get out of the hole of the two and a half million, and also pave streets and everything else, so it's, it's a bigger picture than that.
Can I ask you, Mark, how long do you think it would take to, um, bring that no-pass scenario forward? Because I imagine you have executive team meeting tomorrow morning, I mean, it's not going to be done in one day, I don't.
It will not.
So what's your best guess?
If council wants to meet Saturday morning, we could have a, a discussion Saturday morning. If council wants to have it, um, next week, next Tuesday night, we could have it next Tuesday night. If you want to have this as our base budget, but have it, um, as an addendum, we could definitely have it by the 18th as well. I mean, we're here to do as, as much as we need to, to make council and the, and the public comfortable with what we're presenting.
So what's the council's preference?
I prefer next Tuesday night.
Everybody? Wow, I can't believe we scheduled that so quickly. So I guess that means, yeah, I'm, I'm available that evening too, um, shall we say, it's like 6:30 PM? Does that, does that work for everybody? Okay, 6:30 PM, so no study session this Saturday, you all are relieved as well. But, um, addition of, uh, this meeting next Tuesday, so we will ha- be able to discuss this no-pass scenario in addition to, um, any other changes, okay.
And we should have a lot of the polling data at, right there, so we'd have a better idea.
So I'll call it a budget study session, or we will, I mean, I'm sure it will be appropriately noticed. Wow, okay. Let me delete this item. Okay, um, so that all goes to say that I do have a few questions as well. A lot of them go towards the, um, the new budget document. I wanted to first understand, you know, let me start with the, um, operating budget, and I'm on page three of the, uh, of the budget message. So here we have, uh, you know, all the, these revenue categories, and in most cases, it shows how, you know, our year-end estimate is lower than what was budgeted in almost every category. I wanted to understand the difference in the estimated actual and the budgeted for licenses and permits. We budgeted 3.3 million, and we think it's only going to be 2.3 million. Why is that such a, such a miss?
The actual details for that is in the revenue section, and it does go by individual sources for those, so it kind of gives you a better picture of which ones went up or down. But my understanding is that, um, the departments really weren't involved in developing a lot of those revenues, especially in the licenses and permits. And so it was just, I, I think they were probably developed looking at their, where they were, um, the year before, um, the budget's done. Because like, for now, we're looking at the 1920 budget. I don't have final numbers for 1819, so I'm looking at, well, I'm looking at 1920, or 1819 as well. But the year that you have the full year for is the year before, so 1718. And when you take a look, like at the building permits, the, um, year before, um, last year, it was quite high. So if somebody was looking at building an estimate, they would see that, oh, it's coming in good, it, it's going to be continuing on that way, and not realize or, or not take into account that it may not have been coming in that well in that fiscal year that they were looking at.
Yeah, I want to note, for building permits alone, we budgeted 1.4 or 5 million. Our year-end estimate is only 750,000. So, in essence, this is due to delays in projects pulling building permits, correct?
Well, again, the departments weren't involved in that, in the original estimate?
I, I, I understand, but I mean, the, the end of it, just of it is, maybe we thought some development projects would be pulling buil- building permits for which they have to pay, um, and that hasn't, doesn't look like it's going to be, happen.
I think that's true, but it's also true that, as an example, in 1617. I think that's true, but it's also true that as an example in 1617 where we had that high number, that's a year where we had the Sheridan and the Curio both pulling building permits, both huge expensive projects. So if you use that as your starting point and, and predict it to go higher than that, that's how you end up in that hole.
Sure, that, but that seems even more of a pipe dream, obviously, to project even more of, you know, in building permit revenue than perhaps, I remember that year, I think, well, 1516 was the year I was, I was last mayor and I mean, we did ribbon cutting, groundbreaking ceremonies for both hotels that year. So I guess they maybe paid the permit fee, building permit fees in 1617. But yeah, clearly 1.4 or 5 million was totally out of the realm of real, of reality. So licenses and permits, but I see it also includes business licenses. And here's something I wanted to ask about. Because we have touched about, upon this before in revenue enhancement discussions. And it relates to business licenses. Since we use a flat fee system based on the number of employees, which, you know, I understand that most communities, most cities do not use this kind of system anymore. Most cities have it based on gross receipts. So I guess I'm, maybe here again, it's a question for the council. Would we be willing to entertain changing our business license system to a gross receipts system? Frankly, my business is in the, is in the city too. I would pay more, I'm sure, because my business license is cheap. It's like $150 for the year. But would we be willing to take a look at that as a revenue enhancement item for the, for following years?
So Mayor, I, I think it's a good idea. For instance, the city of LA, they have business license based on the gross receipts, okay? But for our cities, because we have so many brick and mortars, business, so I don't know, you know. I don't think we can collect more money if we just base on the gross receipts. As a matter of fact, I think we charge individual licensees, they work in the city. I think we actually bring in more revenue. So I, I think we have to take a close analysis, you know. And so before we jump into that, I think we need to look into it.
And I would echo that because we have intermittent vendors that come into our city. They may have a lot of employees and they're paying based on that, as well as people that are based in our city and do a lot of work not in our city. So it's kind of like, you're going to miss on some revenue, but you're going to hit a lot more on others. So, I mean, I, I had a business license in the city of Los Angeles and they are not, they are not fun to deal with, especially when you start to do some revenue.
It's not. It's like, it's like doing...
It's like doing your taxes again, yeah. You have a whole other form and it's, the administration of it is, I don't know how, I mean, I don't know how many people the city of LA has doing it, but it must take a lot of employees to go through those and check revenues against tax returns, against, because you have to give, if they don't agree with you, you have to turn in a lot of documents. And it gets to be burdensome, so I don't know if our staff can handle that.
Any other comments?
I mean, I would just be concerned because we have a lot of cash-only businesses within the city and inaccurate reporting, I think, already happened, so I think that may set us up for possibly less revenue.
Than the flat fee system? Interesting, okay.
I was just going to suggest if staff has any idea, since they're in the trenches, they're working with our businesses, is there an opportunity to generate more revenue? Maybe there's an approach we're not thinking of right now. But, you know, anything we can do to increase the business license. Did you have something to say?
I was just going to say to respond to that, we absolutely feel like we could raise more funds with a tax based on the, on the gross receipts instead of the number of employees, but the operative word is tax. We would have to go to the folks, the voters, to get that approved. And so it would be the same education and outreach campaign that we're dealing with now. And it's, it's proven to be a little bit more difficult to get folks to get behind that kind of a measure versus what we're going to be dealing with. And we certainly wouldn't want to do it at the same time as we're looking at a sales tax measure. So it definitely is something that we can plan for in the future, but it's not something we would be able to rely on for next fiscal year or even the fiscal year after.
And would it need just 50 plus one?
Yes, sir. The two, I think quickest revenue methods we can look at are the sales tax measure that we're talking about and then our discussion that we're going to have with Athens on potentially getting a franchise fee from our waste hauler.
Thank you. Okay, I wanted to get clarification in this, back to page three of the budget message, operating budget document. Not because the number is a big miss, but the line item that's community development, what, what is that exactly? Or do I look in the revenue section?
It's back in the revenue section, but I will look it up. In there is plan checking and the special project plan check services and planning fees.
Does planning fees include for major development projects or is that just for residential? Because that, that number's too small to only include, to include major projects.
I am actually not certain because I'm not certain what, exactly what it includes, to be honest with you. I can, I can get that information, but I don't want to misinform you this evening.
No problem. Yeah, if we, if we could.
The largest...
I, yes, ma'am.
The largest item in that category is the special project plan check services. And that has a corresponding revenue, dollar for dollar in the revenue side. So if the expense is not made, then the revenue does not come in, so.
Right. Yeah, because I, if it's, that one line item for sure is when the developer, you know, requests, you know, expedited service. So they, we make them pay for it, you know, we have to hire outside consultants and so forth and so on. The other ones, however, I, if that's, if, so if that line item completely includes that category of services, that, in other words, to the overall budget and to the cash position, it's a wash. So that, that line item would be a complete wash.
Yes.
Then in that case, if we say that the expedited services for which developers pay is mutually exclusive with the other line items, then these other line items would then be actual revenue numbers, I am assuming, correct? That are charged to the developers in addition to those special project plan services?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That, thank you for that clarification. All right. And then public safety, what is that revenue? I mean, I know I can look it up here again.
The largest one is fire service reimbursements for when we send people out to fight the wildfires. We're estimating 430 for this year, because we've already received 423. And looking at, we budgeted 350, but that was in my presentation, and we budgeted 400 on the expense side. So we're bumping that up to 400 to match it. We also have fire services, which are billed to, regular fire services? Regular fire services? What are those? Inspection prevention fees that come through there. The largest one is the ambulance fees. Obviously, it's for the billing that we do for ambulance. We do have a third party that bills for that. There's an increase next year over what we've received in the past, again, because it was offset by the billing costs we used to show as a reduction of revenue, and now that's over on the expense side.
So we charge for false alarms?
Yes. Your cost to respond?
Yeah. I'll be sure not to pull that, you know, that fire alarm thing as a prank anymore. Let's see here. So fire services, even though the actuals in 1718 was 400,000, we budgeted 800,000 for 1819. Awesome. And our year-to-date estimate now is 410,000. So what is fire services as a revenue source?
That's exactly the question about the Curio and the, and the Hilton. Because in 1617, you would have had fire sprinkler permits, you would have had the fire plan check fees for those big projects as well. It also includes inspections for any, the annual inspections that are done. But there's a lot of revenue that comes in as part of a development project for fire.
Oh, so these would be more, but I'm assuming that for the permits, that would, should be included in community development under the, under the permits and licenses versus these services, which would be maybe like more the inspections, or does anybody know how this is broken out? Like if we unpack each of these line items, what's actually included in there?
Chief Wallace, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, does that include the fire sprinkler plan checks and all the other plan check fees?
Well, no, I'm, I, I, well, I'm trying to understand overall too, the impact that delays in real estate projects has had. Because now it appears that it's not just community, the quote-unquote, the community development revenues items, but also seemingly public safety, fire and police as well, right? Because if they're not getting the permit, you know, for the fire sprinkler system, we're not collecting the revenue. Yeah. I see. Okay. So in, in essence too, then that's similar to, the reason for the big miss there, because we budgeted 2.35 million. Our year-end estimate for 1819 is 1.73 million. Another difference of $300,000, $600,000. It's a kind of a result that some projects that we thought would move, or that were budgeted to move forward have not. Pretty much. Okay. We've talked a little bit, some of the other council members too, about the hiring of three additional public works people. And I understand that they will be to help manage the construction of various projects, whether they're streets or, you know, one is a, you know, line-level sewer maintenance person. Do we yet have an estimate of what the cost of hiring those additional individuals would be? And how that is balanced against the cost savings of not having to do a construction management contract at the same time that we do a construction contract?
The, the cost is actually listed under the, in the personnel staffing section. And the Public Works Director did a great job of going in and taking a look to see how much he thinks would be saved on the contract basis. And I forgot the number, so I'm hoping he remembers.
But it always depends upon whatever projects we have for the year, correct, too, as well? I mean, the volume?
To some degree, yes, but I'm anticipating more sewer projects beginning in our near future as we finalize a master plan.
Okay.
Would we be able to fund from the sewer tax to pay off for the inspections of that? Or is that not something we could do structurally?
The inspections?
Because the sewer fund is dedicated to the sewers. If we were doing a sewer project, could that, instead of the general fund, that portion come from the sewer fund?
Absolutely. When we've got, and the funding source lists CIP, they'll be working on, if it's a sewer project, they'll be charged to a sewer project. And the sewer fee will pay. If it's a gas tax project, it'll be charged to gas tax and gas tax will pay. So our thought is it won't be general fund, with the small exception of that $1.3 million that Paula talked about of general fund-funded street projects.
And are these numbers here listed on page two of the personnel and staffing, the new position recommendations, are they fully loaded?
Yes.
Fully loaded for benefits and so forth? Calpers as well, or?
The only thing they don't have on there is the unfunded portion of calpers, because that's a flat rate. We have to pay whether we have them or not. But it does have the normal cost in there and...
Would they be UAL if they're, because they, I mean, I guess if they transfer from another city, then there would still be...
Correct.
Unfunded. But if they were new, they would be PAPRA employees?
Correct. And, and most of the time, unless it's an entry-level position, I've been estimating the cost as a tier-two employee
I see.
Coming in and for their health benefits, I estimate Kaiser to party, just as estimates for costing.
So, I mean, based on step E, then that total cost is 327,300. But, yeah, okay. Just so we have an idea, I guess that does, you know, result in a delta between what we would be saving in construction management consultant fees. But I would also assume that having in-house people being able to do this would provide a higher level of service to the community. You know, as we've had some recent issues with how projects were managed, but can you expand?
Is the 300,000 figure, is that for the three employees or the two?
Three.
So for the three, one of them is a sewer-funded employee and the intent there, I wasn't including that in displacing construction management. That's the other, the role of the other two. This person would displace our fog inspection program, which we currently pay $63,000 a year to do visits to all the restaurants and follow-up for their program. It would also alleviate some of the work. We have a sewer master plan budget that's been approved prior years for $500,000. We got one bid for 498,000 and change, so they must have known our budget. I'm hoping to do the vast majority of that with in-house staff and not go that way possibly at all. And that this position would greatly alleviate the 500,000 I'm trying to get out of as well.
Okay. So that, actually, I like this, you know, thank you for breaking it down and, and, and providing the full picture because then obviously, if we take out that sewer worker from that calculation, then the number is 247,000. And then if we're spending 250,000, that's more or less, you know, a wash there. But there's actually potential cost savings and other things that we don't have to hire out for.
That's correct. It is close to a wash, but there's an added benefit of now we're managing things in-house. I think we'll get tighter control over projects. We do get lots of complaints and things that happen. And I'd like to have direct control over the employees that are out there every day managing it. And they will be able to pick up other side things. As you said, it will depend on the projects we have. But I think we can handle an awful lot with really someone, a solid background person in construction with another public works inspector.
Yes, I totally agree with that, so thanks very much. Let's see here, finally. Let me just, I wanted to make a comment because I read the introduction section here in the operating budget, which is actually a really great, you know, overview of the city, which I'm not sure we've had before, but, you know, it really delves into the history and so forth. One thing that I think is missing though, and certainly on the list of historic sites on page two, is La Laguna. Because I think, you know, if it's going to be on the registry of historic places, it should be listed under our historic sites. And there's no, none of the narrative here in terms of the history touches upon La Laguna either. That's my one comment about, about that. In the CIP, now I'm on page two of the introduction. So I wanted to ask about some of these bullet points. The first one there, De Del Mar Rehabilitation, Dewey to 50 feet north of Valley. Now, this is the portion of Del Mar that runs by the Curio project at, at Valley and Del Mar. I'm wondering if it, is it, you know, and it, and it actually says rubberized asphalt concrete pavement overlay, repairing failed pavement. We, you know, of course it is failed pavement, that's no question about that. However, there's going to be also significant utility work as the power lines are being undergrounded and as we upgrade the sewer line there. Is this something that is required, that... And as we upgrade the sewer line, there, is this something that is required, that is really necessary in this year's fiscal budget? Greg, please.
Um, I don't have great estimates, but I think the utility undergrounding as part of the hotel and going to meetings with Edison and their long lead items, we're probably about a year out.
A year out from now?
From, mm, getting close. I, I think December, January is the earliest we will see Edison. I mean, that, that's an early guess, but I think we are still far out.
So December, January, let's see. Which will come first, the sewer work or the utility work?
Uh, we need to do them in conjunction. We might have them both. We're considering, um, possibly having a joint trench. Edison only approves their pre-approved contractors to do their own work. But they could certainly do a wider trench. They might sub and pass on the bill to us for the sewer line. We're going to look into, um, potential cost savings of coordinating the work.
Um, so then is it the intention of including this five hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget as one of the, yeah, major improvements funded for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, is that the asphalt work would be done immediately after the, uh, the utility and sewer work?
Correct.
Let me write a couple of notes. So, December, January, and we would basically try to do that project then in the spring, kind of thing?
Potentially. There's, um, long lead items. I think they have to put vaults in the ground. It's, it's going to be a high-impact project for sure.
Is there a delay for this? Because I did talk to Edison people and also the representative from Curio Project. They told me it will be in October. So maybe there's a couple months delay.
Um, I don't know if there's an additional delay. I, I just have in my mind that December was mentioned at a meeting I went to. But they're very long lead items and Edison claims they were doing all they could to get things rolling. It's, it's essentially the, um, the giant steel poles that will be the end of the overhead line and bring them down under. Those are long lead. And then the switches in their vaults are extremely long lead items. They were looking into possibly borrowing them from another project, using them here and replenishing their stock. But they are typically, for the most part, spec-built items.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the next bullet point there is the sewer lift station improvements. Would those improvements be in line with what was presented to us, I think I want to say maybe a month and a half ago, something like that?
Yes, with the disclaimer that that is my wild guess. We really don't have a professional design for a solution of a grand master plan of a larger wet well and up to three submersible pumps with the existing pumps we have as backups. That's the figure that I really just put out there as my guess. We haven't hired anybody to do a real analysis or even a preliminary design.
But are, these expenses are included in the budget of, what is it, three point three eight million in new capital improved CIP funding? Is that, is that correct? Like, it's not just listed as a new project with the price tag, but it's actually being budgeted for in the current?
It's budgeted. I think it's eight hundred thousand this year and two hundred thousand next year.
Yeah, something like that.
Plus, there are funds that will roll over from last year, I believe, that add a grinder and scata telemetry enhancements of another, uh, hundred and fifty-ish thousand.
Okay. Um, just want to, and, you know, I'll, I'll offer this for council discussion maybe at the next time we go over this as that whether or not those, these particular items are ones that we want to appropriate for the next fiscal year or are those, these some of the kinds of things that, um, we, um, put into the no-pass scenario or something, you know? Uh, Smith Park Pool Facility improvements. It says that it would be completely demolishing the current pool and building a new state-of-the-art aquatic facility, um, which I would love to have. But I'm wondering, is that really necessary and how, how, as opposed to just sort of renovating the current, uh, structure, which I can tell you from personal experience, it sucks. I mean, but it seems to be a lot more costly to demolish and rebuild something versus, you know, just putting in some stalls, some new flooring, you know, making it look nicer than it is now.
I'll attempt that, but it's, I know Rebecca's been working with a consultant to get a grant for that. Currently, what's funded is a hundred fifty thousand for a new pool deck. And that probably is replastering the pool and, and such. But we're, we're also going for a grant for a much more grander vision at the park. I just want to address that.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Rebecca.
We are currently, um, we actually have a, two grant consultants that we'll be working with for a Prop sixty-eight grant to fund renovations. Smith Park is what we're proposing. Key to that would be renovation of the pool. And we'll be going out with several community meetings, probably about six community outreach meetings, where we'll also be getting feedback from the residents as to what they'd like to see in addition to that. I.e., restroom renovations, pickleball courts, playground, all of those things.
Swings.
Swings. My best guesstimate is that we would be working, we will have to provide, um, some, uh, concept drawings for the grant application. And this, this is a grant that's a minimum of two hundred thousand, maximum of eight million dollars, no match required, which is the wording we like to hear, that there's no match required. And we'll be working with the, the landscape architect to see what the, the cost, if it would be more cost-effective to do a demo of the existing facility and a rebuild as opposed to renovation.
May I suggest maybe just softening the language in this section in this paragraph here? Because this makes it sound like it's already been decided that that's what we're going to do. And we're, you know, we're putting a hundred fifty thousand dollars towards, you know, demoing the, the whole building, which I assume would also put the entire Smith Park Pool out of commission for an extended period of time. You know, I mean, if that, I, I think maybe this project consists of potentially redesigning, re, re, you know, renovating the, the current pool and building, starting with the resurfacing of the pool deck or something along those lines. Because I, that, what you guys have just said right now seems a lot more reasonable than demolishing it and building a state-of-the-art, you know, aquatic facility. In my mind, you know, visions of the Beijing Water Cube.
I, I, I don't think we'll get there. Even with, even if we were to be funded with eight million dollars, we're not going to get there.
Right.
But I think we can definitely look at that language. I think we also want to be realistic, though, and don't want it to come across that it's just minor renovation. And there will be some significant closures of the pool, whether it's grant funds that are coming through or whether we ultimately fund a CIP project. There's going to be significant closure of the pool.
I mean, I, I question whether building a new state-of-the-art facility is realistic. I mean, when we don't, you know, to Councilmember Harrington's earlier point about revenue that we don't have, when we haven't even started applying for the grant yet, you know?
Right.
In other words, I would also rather under-promise and over-deliver rather than over-promise and then under-deliver and have people be disappointed, oh, we're not getting a state-of-the-art, you know, aquatic facility. You know, I thought I saw that in your budget document, and it is.
We, we can relook at that. So just for your information, the grant application will be submitted at the beginning of August. So, um, we will hopefully know, I would like to think by, possibly by the end of the year or early next year. And beyond that, let's say, staff is going to be doing what, if, if the funding were not to come through with the grant, staff will be doing what we're currently doing, which is piecemealing things together to make it more.
No, totally, which I, we definitely appreciate. But I think realistically, the hundred and fifty K is just for the resurfacing, right?
Right.
So I think that is the more accurate project description versus what's written here.
We're going to look at that.
Anyway, okay.
Mayor, can I just, yes, I'm coming. So Rebecca, so, you know, the Major A is available now. And for San Gabriel, actually, it's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, right? So I guess we can start applying through both, you know, Prop sixty-eight and Major A.
We, we can. You're correct that that funding's available. We need to take a look at that because as part of the Measure A, uh, community meetings that were held, and I'll say I was actually on maternity leave when much of those meetings were happening, um, some of the projects that were identified and, and given priority to, were not necessarily projects that we would be going for now. So I believe that with that, we may have to go back out to our residents and do some additional community outreach on that. Um, and then we need to discuss and look at the, all those projects. We have, as you all know, we have a lot of needs in our parks, and so we need to look at what those are, determine what our priority is, and, and also determine if we're ready to move forward using those funds or do we want to compile them for a few years and be able to do a larger project?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have. And, uh, thank you to, uh, all the staff members who have stayed with us this late into the evening, members of the community. I hope it was, uh, fun and educational. Are there any other comments or questions of the council at this time? So we are scheduled to, um, bring this back at a special meeting next Tuesday, six thirty P.M. And we will move on with the agenda. Thank you, Paula. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment.
Go ahead and, oh, do you need to read the whole thing again? No? Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to yell at us at this point in time? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comments. Next item.
The next item is City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think it's a pro that we're talking about revenue measures. And I was going to put forth the discussion on whether we would want to form an ad hoc committee for the Athens discussion. Um, I'm more than happy to have two councilpeople join me in discussions with Athens. But if the council can't decide which of the two best councilmembers there are to help with that, I'm also more than happy to meet one-on-one with Athens and then come back to you all for periodic updates and direction. So I was hoping that it would foster some discussion and you can give me direction on how you want to approach that.
Yeah, and the last time we discussed this, Councilmember Harrington was not present, but I had heard that you would be interested in serving on the subcommittee. So we defer that decision until when we can all be present. I'm the only person who said that I, you know, do not, do not want to be on this committee, subcommittee just for being spread too thin already. Not because it's not important, but, you know, because I just feel like I need to focus on the things that are already on my plate. So I'd like to provide an opportunity then, you know, for you and everybody to, again, sort of say, you know, make the pitch. And then hopefully we can come to some consensus. Or if we can't, then, um, you know, we can also just ask staff to proceed without having a council subcommittee, which may mean, though, we would have more study sessions or, you know, uh, agendized review sessions in the process so that the full council can provide direction at different critical points in the negotiations. So why don't we start with you, Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just give a couple of comments. Number one, I think when we're dealing with a vendor like this and we're trying to basically extract money, whatever you want to call it. The council, I, I think, being there, being present in the discussion adds a little weight as to our seriousness. And the fact that we, you know, we're, we're sending two councilmembers there shows that, you know, this is something that's going to happen one way or another. It's better to negotiate it. And also, I mean, I do negotiate contracts daily. I'm going to have a fun one coming up next week with Microsoft, and that'll be a lot of fun. But I mean, it's just, I, I, I feel I have some skills that would add to that. I kind of know when to stay quiet and let staff do it, and then when to step in as a councilmember, say, this is what, I, I can't speak for the entire council, but I can speak from experience how our council has dealt with Athens over the years. We've been a very generous partner, in my opinion. We appreciate the service, but at the same time, we feel that we may not be compensated as well as some other cities are. And we think we should be on par. At least open, maybe not open your books, but show us what you're doing with other cities. We should, we believe we are one of the better cities to deal with, so let's be treated that way. So I think I would be good at dealing with that.
Thank you. Yeah, bye, Speaker Manchaca.
So I am still interested in being in the subcommittee. I was the, the councilmember who initiated the, um, the agenda item, you know, and fortunately, there was, everyone was interested in participating now. I, I think, um, there's, there is also value in having this being brought up to all of us and we can't decide who are the two best. I think we're all great. But, um, I think there is value showing that all of us are very interested in this contract. Um, so if we can't decide, then let's at least bring it back. And it also gives the community an opportunity to kind of work through the process along with us. So, um, anyway, those, that's my feedback.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Costanza.
Thank you, Mayor Fu. I mean, I also put my name in because it is something that's very important to me and has been a longtime conversation in need. And I'm grateful that all of us want to be involved in this. But I would, um, I would pull my name depending on the two people. I would certainly support John and Denise on being on it. John, for the reason that you just mentioned contractual, because that's going to be very important. You're dealing with a, a big company with a lot of attorneys. And I think to have you on there would be beneficial to the city to make sure everything's in place appropriately.
Thank you, Councilmember Costanza. Councilmember, they are.
So, you know, I'm, like I said before, I'm very involved with this trash, uh, business. And because I'm on this E and R, the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources. And this, all the trash company facing this new law, SB thirteen eighty-three. By, um, January first, two thousand twenty, as a matter of fact, all the commercials, they have to recycle the organic waste, that's including the green waste and full waste. So if without, uh, doing this process, you know, the city will be fined ten thousand, ten thousand a day. And so we have to work with the trash company and see how we can deal this, you know, mandated. I, I call it, this is not a problem, but it's just we have to work with the trash haulers and see how we can properly recycle the organic waste. And it is something that I'm very passionate about because it is for environmental issue. And if we want to improve the greenhouse gas emission, we got to do something. Because you cannot send this organic waste to the landfill anymore. And, you know, we just have to work with them, especially Athens. We still have eleven years. And if they don't comply, the city will be fined. So we have to work with them. And also, I want to tell them, because they're heavy trucks that go through our cities every day, and of course, they're doing a great job. But then they also damage our streets. And for some, you know, portion of these payments, they should be responsible. So this is something I want Athens to consider to, yeah, to pay for the damage of our streets. So I want to be the, one of a liaison for this. And, you know, I, I, I think I can convince them because, again, because this is the law that we have to apply, comply. So, uh, you know, we all have to work together, but for a reasonable know, we all have to work together, but for reasonable cause to our rig pairs, including commercials and residential. Okay? So, yeah, I'm still very interested.
Thank you, Councilmember Leal. You know, I'd like to add some comments, too, because I, you know, I appreciate your passion for this issue, and I think the issues that you raise are very important issues. However, I want to really thank Councilmember Costanzo for, you know, being also passionate and interested in this issue, but yet, you know, for the sake of having some consensus, being willing to step back and also, and allow John and Denise to be the subcommittee members, because I personally would feel that the best team for a subcommittee would also be John and Denise, you know, John for his legal background and negotiating skills, and Denise for her independence and financial, you know, background, finance background. And I'm assuming that if that were the set of appointments, the two of you would support it and be willing to serve on the subcommittee? I mean, if that's okay, then it seems then we would have at least four people here who would support that, and that, you know, we wouldn't trust you to direct and guide the negotiations and try to, you know, bring back, you know, a better product for the city and for the community than what we have now.
And just as a matter of background, I wasn't here when the issue was brought up. Have we approached them at all yet, or is this something that they're going to blind sign them?
No, we've approached them. I've had about four meetings with Athens.
And when I initiated the conversation, we did have the Athens representative here, so he was well aware.
So is that okay? Does everybody feel okay? All right. You know, I actually, you know, this is one of maybe the first time we've had a situation where everybody really wanted to be involved with something, and it just can't happen due to the Brown Act concerns that, you know, everybody's involved. So I think that we've got a great team going forward, and, you know, best of luck to you. I'm sure, you know, some six months down the line, you guys will have had lots of meetings and things like that, and then we'll finally hear a few weeks.
I'm.
I'm all for that, too. I'm all for that, too. Absolutely. But, yeah. Okay, great. So is that all for city manager items? Okay. Next item is council comments, right?
Next item is council comments and conference slash meeting reports.
Okay. Let's start with Councilmember Leal.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I attend the Congresswoman Judy Chews Roundtable regarding the twenty-twenty census, and San Gabriel is one of a hard-to-count community. There's a report from Claremont College. They, well, they have a report regarding the population growth in District Twenty-seven, and that is one of the lowest is the state of California. The average growth in the state is nine percent, and in the city or congressional District Twenty-seven is two-point-seven percent. So we're, we're very low. So what happened is if we lose, well, the uncounted population and the district total population is less than seven, I believe it's seven-hundred thousand, then we're going to lose a congressional seat. So, you know, so that is a serious situation, and right now, I think they want us to form, it's called the Complete Count Committee, you know, from the city staff and maybe the community people, and start, you know, asking all the nonprofits to get involved with this twenty-twenty census. Still, I think there's a question for citizenship on the form. Most likely, the question will stay, and however, I think it's going to hurt some residents, they don't feel comfortable answering that question. And so we have to really work extra hard to count everyone, you know? So this is something we all have to work together, because each person equals two-thousand dollars, okay? So if we have five thousand miscount, there will be, yeah, so you can modify that. And so this is very important, and not just the federal funding, as a matter of fact, the state, the county, pretty much appropriation is based on population. So we just have to keep that number correct. And another event, of course, it's a whole week of event, is APA Festival. This year is incredible. We got very talented people from Crazy Rich Asians, the movie, and the singers, these young ladies from USC, but also we have a wonderful play and also fashion show. This guy, his name is Kevin Hall, and he dresses Mrs. Obama. So he's excellent fashion designer. But I think the most impressive is our, you know, our own community service director, Rebecca Perez. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You were there from the beginning till the end for all four days. I just couldn't believe it, you could, you know, stay there for so long, so it's, yeah, I'm very impressed by your involvement with the APA Festival. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Costanzo.
Due to the lateness of the night and the fact that we still have closed session, I will defer my comments to another evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Harrington.
Ditto.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
A couple of things. June thirteenth surfs up, just a reminder. And second, as we were talking about revenue enhancement, I was told neighboring city is going to be charging fees for those landowners that just leave the land there, create blight, and so I'd like the staff to look into that, because we have quite a few properties like that. And I'll give you more detail after the meeting.
I have tried to keep it brief. I've been told to provide some reminders, as the Vice Mayor Manchaca just says, surf's up is on June thirteenth, right around the corner. I will see if I can move some things around to still attend, although there is also, I think it's a census meeting, right, that evening, or no? Oh, it's the, right. Thank you. The east side extension of the Metro Gold Line, that meeting, but there are a few of those in the area, so we have a few opportunities to provide input. The Kids Day and Fourth of July Parade on July fourth, conveniently enough, starting here at Plaza Park and going to Smith Park. And there's a sidewalk hands-only CPR on Thursday, June sixth, from ten a.m. to one P.M. at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse Plaza. The San Gabriel Fire Department will be providing training for this valuable lifesaving skill which can be learned in just five minutes. You can learn to keep a person's heart pumping, oxygenated blood until emergency workers arrive. Fantastic. And I wanted to report out on a couple of things that I neglected to. At SCAG about a month ago now, they are doing a strategic plan, and, you know, I've been talking about how we, you know, SCAG is the body that sets the Rena numbers for the region, which then get filtered down and allocated among the cities within the region. You know, there's many other things that SCAG is involved in, including transportation and, you know, almost every other issue on the state level. So anyway, there is this thing called SCAG Connect, Connect SoCal, and they're asking for input with respect to this new plan. It's a long-term plan, and it's called connectsocal.org/survey. And I haven't yet gone to the site, but I'll try to take a look and see, you know, how or if we're, it's useful or appropriate for us to be involved in this overall regional planning process. And in keeping with that, too, it seems everybody, we all have a lot of plans. It's kind of like our action plan, mostly the plan, not as much action sometimes, but let's see here, the, from the Kong Transportation Committee last time, in addition to talking about sixty-six Golden Streets, the county came to present, the L.A. County has a sustainability department, and they are doing a county-wide sustainability plan. This plan actually is pretty all-encompassing. It includes everything from water, energy, land use, transportation, open space, climate change, of course, open biodiversity, public health, economy and workforce development, housing resilience, resilience meaning what happens in the event of a disaster or, you know, wildfires that have recently plagued the state and also governance. So disaster preparedness is, you know, also under that resilience category. Anyway, I just want to let everybody be aware of that, because I don't know how far this will go. There's not funding attached to actually implementation of this plan, but from what I understood, the board of supervisors will be having hearings and potentially adopting this plan in the late summer, maybe like July or August, and it could have an effect for us. Finally, last week was the L.A. County Mayor's convening, that Mayor Garcetti calls, you know, sends out invitations to all eighty-eight cities in the county, and at that, the particular meeting was mostly about, well, first of all, one thing that was very interesting was recognizing PTSD in firefighters and how do we address it? And that was the chief of L.A. County Fire, I forgot his name, you probably know him. Osby, yes. Heyman presented, and there was a video, and it's something I hadn't thought about before, so, I mean, again, and maybe it's also true for police as well, you know, anybody who has to encounter some things that might be, you know, kind of horrific on a daily basis. So anyway, if there is some, if there is any of that, you know, please let us know. I mean, I'm not sure programmatically if there's something we can or undo in the short term, but certainly if there's folks who are experiencing some trauma or, you know, and there's a way for us to be able to better support them, then that's something that I think we would all want to do. The other thing that they talked about was early education and pre-K readiness, but the thing I really wanted to, which is obviously studies are showing now how beneficial that is, the impact that pre-K readiness can have on long-term outcomes such as high school graduation, college addition, and higher earning, you know, higher earnings potential and higher earnings later in life. But the real thing is, I've had a chance then to talk to several other mayors in San Gabriel Valley, and many of them are also moving forward with the sales tax measure as we are. And I think the general feeling was like, yeah, well, we have to do this, and that they, people generally felt confident that they could pass it. I think Arcadia is going out in June, or in fact, they should vote today. Oh, they're mail-in, so we will at least get them as the primary guinea pigs and their results by later this month, I'm going to say, right? And then others were mixed about whether or not they're going out in November or March. But, yeah, I think the general feeling was high, very high level of confidence in March, but not sure whether they'll be ready or if they'll go out in November. Others were just simply still studying the issue, like Temple City, I believe, and that to me is sort of suggests, you know, if they haven't really committed to it by now or thought about it carefully by now, you know, they've got to hustle if they're going to actually make it, at least for November. So in any case, that was the report. I think that we're not alone in bringing forward the sales tax measure. Several other cities throughout the San Gabriel Valley are doing it, and I think that that can also be part of our, you know, part of our education campaign as well. Okay. That's my comments, and we will now move to closed session, conference legal counsel, existing litigation, case named City of Doherty v. State Water Resources Control Board and Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. We'll recess for five minutes and then reconvene in closed session in conference room A. Thank you.